Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Santa Clara City Council meeting. Could I ask you to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for our Statement of Values?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
As we gather, we humbly seek blessings upon this meeting. May we act with strength, courage, and will to perform our obligations and duties to our people with justice to all. Let us seek wisdom so that we may act in the best interests of our people, our neighbors, and our country. All this we ask so we may serve our community with fairness and respect, putting their needs before all.
Thank you. Please be seated. City Clerk?
Councilmember, Board Member Watanabe?
Here.
Councilmember, Board Member Shahal?
Present.
Councilmember, Board Member Hardy?
Present.
Councilmember, Board Member Park?
Here.
Councilmember, Board Member Jane?
Here.
Vice Mayor, Vice Chair Becker?
Present.
Mayor and Chair Gilmore?
Here.
Thank you. The AB 23 announcement, members of the Santa Clara Stadium Authority, Sports and Open Space Authority, and Housing Authority are entitled to receive $30 for each attended meeting. Statement of Behavioral Standards, the city of Santa Clara has adopted a code of ethics and values and behavioral standards for public meetings to promote and maintain the highest levels of conduct. This includes mutual respect, robust discussion, and allowing city business to be done in an efficient and consistent manner. Please note that as the presiding officer, the mayor's and chair's direction in matters of process and decorum should be followed, and that use of the gavel indicates all conversations must conclude, and everyone in attendance should come to order and attention. Welcome and thank you for your participation. For those attending this evening and joining us in the capacity of a registered lobbyist, we ask you to please identify yourself as such and disclose the clients and/or organizations that you represent. This is pursuant to City Code Section 2.155.110. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. So, good evening, everyone, and welcome. For tonight, for today's meeting, the city council is back in person and is conducting its meeting in a hybrid manner. The public is welcome to attend in person, and the city continues to use a Zoom feature to allow participation from your home or office. Members of the public can still join via the link and/or call into the Zoom meeting phone number shown on the screen now. If you would like to speak on an agenda item or during public presentations, please raise your hand on the Zoom application or press *9 on your phone. Please only raise your hand while the item you're seeking to speak on is presented. Staff will enter your name or the last four digits of your phone number, and I will call on you to speak. As a friendly reminder, members of the public have two minutes to speak on an agenda item and three minutes on public presentations, and those are reserved for topics that are not on the agenda. Prior to each agenda item, staff will lower your hand to ensure members of the public are seeking to speak on the appropriate agenda item. So, we're going to move on to the council agenda now. Joe, can I ask you to make me a participant in this? Sorry to disturb you. All right. Next, we're going to move on to continuances, exceptions, and reconsiderations. Oh, I just got it now. City manager, staff, city council, anyone? None? Any member of the public? All right, seeing none, we're going to move on to our special order of business. So, this evening, we're going to be honoring two groups here, well, one individual and then a group of students as well. We recognize a few Santa Clara youth for their exceptional work with various projects and initiatives. First, we would like to recognize Santa Clara resident Andrew Lamb. Andrew has taken on many projects to benefit the needs of others on both a local and global level. In 2019, Andrew won first place at the Santa Clara Children's Business Fair for creating an arcade game which encouraged participation from older adults, those with disabilities, and children. He donated the proceeds from the game to an orphanage in the Philippines. In the Rivermark neighborhood, Andrew and his sister sold boba drinks and donated proceeds to the Grace Public School in India. Andrew started a company to develop ear savers with a 3D printer for healthcare professionals to relieve pressure on their ears from wearing masks for long hours. And Andrew coordinated a drive to provide over 230 care package kits for the unhoused community. He has done so much, and I could go on, but I'd like to ask Councilmember Watanabe, who nominated him to come this evening, to say a few words about Andrew before I ask him to come up and speak.
Thank you, Mayor, and it's a real pleasure to be able to honor Andrew Lamb this evening. It's always been important to me over the last eight years to honor and support and promote our youth because they are our future, and I say this all the time, but they truly are, and it's clearly evidenced in what Andrew is bringing to talk to us about tonight. I want to congratulate Andrew for being such a wonderful young entrepreneur, to engaging his fellow youth, his peers, and being such a wonderful mentor. And I know that just in this short period of time with all these great things that you've done, there are obviously more great things ahead of you, Andrew, so congratulations, and I'm glad that you're here to join us this evening.
Thank you, Councilmember Watanabe. I'd like to ask Andrew to come up and say a few words. And you're all the way in the back of the room. All right, Andrew. Welcome. Yes, absolutely. Oh, I'd go on the other side. Yes. So, people at home can see you as well. You're on many screens, believe me.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you to the council and everyone in attendance tonight. It's been a joy to serve my community, and for that, I would like to thank the city of Santa Clara for providing me the opportunities necessary to extend the reach of my impact. Through city-run events like the Business Fair as well as Wednesday night food trucks, I was given opportunities to feed into larger initiatives that I carry out today. These experiences have extended the impact of my outreach globally, allowing my nonprofit to fund small businesses in over 10 different countries. In addition to this, my high school mentorship comprised of middle schoolers through high schoolers has been able to create over 230 care packages for the homeless of underfunded regions in our county. I want to extend a huge thanks to Mrs. Watanabe as well as Mayor Gilmore for recognizing me as someone who has made an impact. In addition to this, I am thankful for the city of Santa Clara for inspiring me to create, to care for my community as well as one day pursuing a business-oriented career. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew, so much. So, let's give him a round of applause. Very impressive. Why don't you just take a seat, but I'm going to call you back up later to have a photo with the council, and we have certificates to present you, so just bear with us for a little bit. So, next, we recognize a remarkable group of students who co-founded Code for Cause. Code for Cause is a philanthropic hackathon cofounded by Aina Dash, Asmi Sawant, Anya Mishra, Mithil Patil, and Anav Bhardiya. The group combines coding with community impact to foster solutions in partnership with local nonprofits. One standout project was an app for Intertech, a platform connecting students with volunteer tutors worldwide. I now invite the Code for Cause team to the podium, and if you would like to say a few words, but before you say a few words, I'd again like Councilmember Watanabe to say a few words before they come up.
I just find these great kids all over the place.
Amazing.
And it's, again, such a wonderful honor to be able to have you here this evening and talk about your project and share it with others and find encouragement to know that people care about what you're doing and keep doing it because you're doing good things. So, thank you for being here this evening.
So, thank you. So, Code for Cause, please come forward. Welcome.
Good evening, members of the Santa Clara City Council, and thank you for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Aina Dash, and I'm one of the cofounders of Code for Cause, the Bay Area's first philanthropic hackathon. Our mission is simple yet impactful, to empower individuals, especially students, to use technology and creativity to address pressing issues in our local community.
Over the hackathons we attended throughout high school, we realized these events could have created a tangible impact. While these events tackled global issues and saw the birth of many creative applications, few were deployed and put out into the world. We envisioned a hackathon that didn't just end with pitches and prizes, but translated ideas into real-world action. Code for Cause is focused on connecting nonprofits to hackers, empowering developers to create solutions that solve real community needs.
Since launching in December 2023, Code for Cause has engaged over 400 participants, raised over more than $6,000, and partnered with local businesses and nonprofits. Our event combines workshops, mentorship, and collaboration, enabling participants to create projects that truly matter. For example, one team developed an app for Intertech, a nonprofit connecting students with volunteers worldwide. Watching their solutions go from idea to implementation was a powerful reminder of our impact that we can achieve together.
Code for Cause is about more than just technology. It's about fostering a culture of innovation and responsibility. I'm proud of the recognition we received, including the Gold Presidential Volunteer Service Award, but the real reward has been witnessing the passion of our participants and the tangible change they're creating in our community.
Thank you, Santa Clara City Council, for acknowledging initiatives like ours. With your continued support, we can inspire even more young innovators to channel their skills into solutions that make a difference at home. Thank you.
Amazing. So, thank you to all the students for being here tonight. All of you have created real meaningful change in our communities, and you should be very proud. We're very proud of you, and the future is bright in Santa Clara. So, we're going to start, I'm going to ask the council to come join me down here. We're going to start with Andrew, if you'd like to come forward, please. It's always nice to start meetings on such a positive note. All right. Okay, next, we have moving on, our consent calendar. All items are approved with one motion unless a councilmember, member of the public pulls an item for discussion, and I know we have two potential conflicts. My screen's not working either. I'm having all these problems tonight. Did I unplug it? Yes, go ahead, Councilmember Shahal.
Madam Mayor, I have to recuse on, as per advices from the city council, city attorney's office, I have to recuse on item 2P, P as Paul.
Okay.
Item is action on delegation of authority to the city manager to negotiate and execute amendments to agreements for design professional services for Silicon Valley power system capacity expansion planning, including plan implementation and general consulting services. I have a property within 1,000 feet of this project, so I'll have to recuse on that particular item.
Okay, thank you. City Clerk, do you have that? And then Councilmember Watanabe?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Yes, I also need to recuse myself from item 2H, which is an action on an agreement with Himleyhorn and Associates, Inc. for Design Professional Services for the Uncontrolled Crosswalk Improvements Phase II Project because my home is actually within 1,000 feet of the location of this project. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any other councilmembers? I can't see the list, so. Anyone like to pull an item for discussion? Any member of the public? All right, may I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So, motion.
So, we have a motion by Councilmember Shahal, second by Vice Mayor Becker, noting the abstentions with Councilmember Shahal and Councilmember Watanabe. Might have to do a roll call for me. City Clerk?
Yeah, sorry about that. Councilmember, Vice Mayor Becker?
Yes.
Councilmember, Board Member Hardy?
Yes.
Councilmember, Board Member Jane?
Yes.
Councilmember, Board Member Shahal?
Yes.
Councilmember, Board Member Watanabe?
Yes.
Councilmember, Board Member Park?
Yes.
Mayor, Chair Gilmore?
Yes, and that also included the Stadium Authority consent calendar.
Thank you.
Failed to mention that. Okay, next, we have public presentations, and those are limited to items that are not on the agenda. City Clerk, I can't see, oh, that passes unanimously, thank you. City Clerk, I can't see the list if we have public presentations. Do we have any public presentations? Is there any member of the public here in the audience that would like to make a public presentation? If so, come forward. Okay, seeing none. Boy, we're moving along here.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
We have a hand up now. Natalie, online?
We have somebody online?
Yes.
Okay, can you call them? I can't.
Natalie?
Okay, Natalie. Natalie? Yes, go ahead, please.
Hi, I'll try to be brief. I'm Natalie Newfeld. I'm the PhD student who's been conducting research on local politics. As I, several months ago, I've been attending Santa Clara City Council meetings, both in person and online, which was cleared with the Clerk's Office in May, I believe. So, my data collection is over. I will no longer be observing the city council meetings. I don't have any findings to report because I haven't analyzed anything yet, but I've learned a lot. So, thank you for letting me observe the city council meetings, and have a good evening.
Thank you, and thank you for checking in. We haven't seen you in a while, so, thank you, Natalie. Anyone else? Do we see anybody else? All right. Okay, we don't have any consent items to pull for discussion, so we are now moving to the item number four, which is a public hearing, general business, and its action on an appeal of the Planning Commission's denial of a variance and conditional use permit for the construction of a new four-story, 111,978-square-foot data center at 1231 Comstock Street. So, item number four is the proposed construction of a new four-story, 111,978-square-foot data center located at 1231 Comstock Street. The actions under consideration are a conditional use permit to authorize the data center use and a variance for increased height, reduced setbacks, and reduced parking. This item comes to the city council on an appeal brought by the applicant, Prime Data Centers, following the Planning Commission's decision to disapprove the CUP and variance on October 23rd. This item is a public hearing, and I'll now declare the public hearing to be open. And before we begin the presentations, our city attorney is making me read this. Aren't you city attorney? Yes. Do any councilmembers have any disclosures they would like to make regarding ex parte communications? All right, let's go down the list here. Anthony, do you have any?
Nothing, no, I have nothing to report.
Councilmember Hardy?
One of the Planning Commissioners that was on the losing side of the motion that did pass for Planning Commission talked with me.
Councilmember Jane?
Yes, I have several. First, I watched the Planning Commission meeting. Second, Jim Kinnin, a registered lobbyist, talked to me about the project, about potential benefits from the project. Third, David Beany, a registered lobbyist, talked to me about project labor agreements and the benefits of the project. On November 18th, I met with Becca Parsons, the site acquisition director, and Stephen Elkins, the product development manager for Prime Data Centers, and the topic of the discussions there were several. First, they have a will cert, we talked about that they, before they purchased the land, they had a buy-off from the fire department and SVP. They received a will-serve letter from SVP. They don't require a substation or power lines. They talked about the benefits.
Are we supposed, excuse me for one second, are we supposed to go in this kind of detail, city attorney? I thought it was just general topics.
Yeah, brief summaries is what's in order, Madam Mayor, but if there is detailed information that's shared that might form the basis for the councilmember's decision or any of the rest of yours' decision, it can be helpful.
All right, because this is new for us, so I'm just checking here.
Yeah, we had to do this a lot on Planning Commission. So, they talked about how the amount of money, 300 million, is invested in the building, and then the $1.2 billion of GPUs of equipment inside the building, seven to nine full-time employees. There's a PLA done, should create 175 union construction jobs. And then they talked about the amount of property taxes and sales tax benefits to the city. the city. And they said that, of course, it will comply with the Climate Action Plan and use 100% renewable clean energy for the project, day one. And we also talked about the Planning Commission's discussion about nuclear energy for data centers, which is prohibited to build any new nuclear in California since 1976 until there is permanent storage for nuclear fuel waste. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, fine, oh, sorry. I also talked to Mary Grizzle today about the sales and property tax advantages from the project, the number of jobs, and the electricity use. That's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Taha.
Madam Mayor, I have to recuse on this item because I have property within thousand feet of this thing, so as per city attorney advice, I'll leave the dice.
Thank you. We'll call you when we're finished. Councilmember Watanabe.
Thank you, Mayor. I had conversations with Stephen Elkins and Jim Kinnon about this project. Mr. Elkins, because I wasn't very familiar with the project at the time, he sent me some information just to bring me up to speed. And Mr. Kinnon said that he had been brought onto the project and just wanted to make sure I didn't have any questions. And I did watch a bit of the Planning Commission meeting, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Park.
Yes, I also had a discussion with Jim Kinnon, basically talking about why this project would be good for the community, and I did watch a little bit of the Planning Commission meeting.
Thank you. And I had a Zoom meeting with the representatives from the Prime Data Center, and the thrust of the conversation was moving, being able to reschedule the meeting from January to tonight. And so that's what I worked on predominantly, was moving up the meeting. And I did talk to Jim Kinnon as well, but he, it was very brief, probably two to three minutes. Do you have any questions? I said, no. That was pretty much it. So, see the attorney, there we go. All right, uh, let's see. So at this time, I would turn this over to the city manager for a staff presentation.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, members of council and members of the public, both here and at home. As the mayor mentioned in the intro, this is a project appeal from a Planning Commission denial of a data center located at 1231 Comstock Street. The staff is recommending approval of the appeal, which would be to permit the data center, the council actions that are requested are a conditional use permit, approval of three variances, as well as accepting of an initial study of a mitigated negative declaration. Tonight's presentation will be provided by Afshah Ahmed, the city's community and economic develop, the community development director, and I will invite her to the podium to provide the presentation. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. The introduction has already been done, so I will just go ahead and start my presentation of the project. There is a request tonight, which requires three actions. The first action is for a use permit for the demolition of the existing building and the construction of a new approximately 1,112-square-foot data center, which is a four-story building. Three variances, and the variances consist of increasing the building height from 70 feet to 87 feet, reduction of the parking spaces from 25 feet to 21 feet, and a reduction of the front yard setback from 15 feet to 10 feet. There is also an initial study and mitigated neck deck with the mitigation monitoring report as well. So the item went to the Planning Commission on October 23rd, 2024, and at the Planning Commission, the project was denied. And during the Planning Commission meeting, the applicant team answered Planning Commission questions, which included questions about power usage, environmental concerns, and other uses that could be developed at this property. Some Planning Commissions, Commissioners desired a more active use at the property, while some other Planning Commissioners felt a data center would support future housing through job creation. In two motions, the Planning Commission voted to deny the conditional use permit and the variances with a vote of four to three. And the Commission majority findings were that the proposed use would be detrimental to the harmonious or orderly growth of the city, given the large number of data centers that are already present in the city, and the fact that the data centers result in fewer jobs, have no synergistic retail or connectivity to other surrounding uses, and that there was insufficient special circumstances or conditions applicable to the project that would justify granting of this variation, variance. The applicant did file an appeal and stated that the project meets or exceeds all of the City of Santa Clara zoning and design requirements, and requests that the City Council overturn the Planning Commission decision. So as a background, the application was submitted on December 2022. At the same time, staff was undertaking the new zoning code in two steps. So on February 2024, step one of this new zoning code became effective, and April of 2024, the application was deemed complete. Since the application was still in process and deemed complete, it was reviewed under what we called the classic zoning code. In July of 2024, the applicant continued to move the project and held a community meeting, notices were mailed, and there were favorable public comments at that community meeting. On August of 2024, step two of the new zoning code became effective. However, this project was already grandfathered in the classic code. In October 23rd, 2024, the project was denied by the Planning Commission. The next day, on the 24th, the applicant filed their appeal. So in this image, I just want to point out one thing. This is the existing building. It's a one-story warehouse, and it's vacant. This is the proposed building, and this is the elevation that the applicant is proposing. Comstock Street is here in the front. I will briefly talk about the site and the surrounding uses. This is a 1.37-acre site. This is the site right here. The general plan is low-intensity office, research, and development, and the classic zoning is the light industrial ML, and this is the zoning that we're using for this project as well as the standards. The current zoning, which was approved after the project, is low-intensity office, research, and development. The surrounding uses on this slide, this is the, once again, this is the existing pro, this is the site itself right here. To the north are data centers. To the east are data centers, and to the west are data centers. To the south is Owens Corning and its vacant industrial project. Just some information about the project itself and what they're proposing. This is a four-story data center with a height of 87 feet. 70 feet is currently allowed by our zoning code, so this does require a variance. They're proposing approximately 112,000 square foot with an FAR of 1.88. The project will contain six backup diesel generators that will be housed internally. It's 13.5 megawatt capacity. The noise that will be generated will meet 70 dBa, which meets our noise standards and our general plan standards as well. This was also analyzed as part of the environmental review process. There will be seven air-cooled roof chillers, and those chillers will be surrounded by a 12-foot mechanical screening and parapet. 21 surface parking stalls are proposed, and those are all around the building. And there will be two underground fuel tanks. In addition, the applicant is proposing landscaping to the east of the project on the site. And they are also proposing five 36-inch box trees with 136 shrubs total. There will be some frontage improvements as well with the sidewalk and landscape strip The project elevations are on this slide, and these are, the architectural design is pending the decision of the conditional use permit and the variance. So if approved, it will go before the development review hearing for an architectural review, which will be separate, and it will be an action that will take place after an action is rendered tonight. So in terms of the general plan consistency, the proposal is consistent with the applicable policies of the general plan in that it utilizes and improves an underutilized property for use as a data center and strengthens the existing tax base. The project includes improvements to the project frontage, including a five-foot separated sidewalk and four-foot landscape strip in the public right-of-way. The FAR does exceed the metric, but however, FAR is just one metric that we use to evaluate. In terms of the traffic volumes, it is supported by the general plan. The project is consistent with the general plan policies in that it works with the property owners to improve or redevelop underutilized and vacant properties, require that new development provide adequate public services and facilities, infrastructure, and amenities to serve the employment or residential growth, work with existing Santa Clara businesses to retain and expand employment opportunities, and strengthen the existing tax base. Under the use permit, this is, again, the classic zoning designation, and under 18.60.050, a conditional use permit is required for the project, for the building itself, and for the height. In the ML district, a data center is not listed as an allowed use. However, appropriate uses may be allowed through a conditional use permit, which is what the applicant is requesting tonight. The project is consistent with development standards under 18.60.090, and these development standards include such things as noise, lighting, and primary facades, and the project is consistent as well with the adjacent land uses. An environmental review was conducted for this project under CEQA, and an initial study was prepared, and it concluded that there were no adverse physical impacts and that potential impacts could be reduced to a less-than-significant level through the mitigated, through the mitigation monitoring and reporting program, which is part of the conditions of approval. So staff recommends, consistent with the general plan, the approval of the conditional use permit, variance, and IS, MND, and the MMRP, that the project would be compatible with adjacent land uses and the existing industrial character of the area. The proposal would promote harmonious and orderly growth of the city by improving an underutilized property with aesthetically pleasing design, and the lot size and axes are sufficient for a data center. And furthermore, the project is generally consistent with the general plan, is inconsistent with the zoning designation as well, and the development standards. And thank you. I'm here for any questions or comments, and I believe that the applicant is also here tonight and has an application, has a presentation.
Thank you so much. Thank you, appreciate that. We're going to go to council now, just questions only. Councilmember Jane.
Yes, as I had mentioned that I had spoken with the applicant, and can you confirm that they've already received buy-off from the fire department and SVP for this project, and that they have a will-serve letter from SVP? Additionally, I think you said that there was, the sound levels were 70 dBa, which I think exceeds the city's standards. And when I saw the Planning Commission presentation, I thought it was like 45 or 50 dBa, because they have the internal backup generators. And then finally, can you confirm that the site across the street, Corning, is, was purchased by Amazon, and their intent is to build warehouses and data centers there on 40 acres? That's it.
All right, Councilmember Hardy.
Thank you. I was not real clear when you were showing the different elevations, which side would most people see from Central Expressway? And when we talk about variances, you mentioned the height difference, the parking difference in the fence. We have to have findings for that, so I'd like to know, because your assessment was different than the Planning Commission, they said there weren't the findings, and I'd like to hear staff's answer to that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Watanabe.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. My question has to do with the height regarding the variance. So if it's going to be 87 feet, I noticed there was a document relating to communications with the FAA. Does the FAA have any issues with the height of the building? That's all I have. Thank you.
And that's it for the questions, so when you're ready, staff.
Okay, thank you. So Councilmember Jane, yes, the project does have sign-off from both the fire and SVP. There was a clearance at the, is it the project committee? And if there's any other further questions specific to SVP, Manuel is here to answer those. We do have an application across the street at Owens Corning site that includes data center and warehouse. I'm not sure of the applicant. 70 dBa is the max in the zoning code for the noise level, and I believe that the application will be meeting that, or it will be reduced. The generators are contained internally in the building. There are some exterior accessories, such as an emergency backup generator, but those will only be used during testing or if there is a power outage. So this will not exceed what the city's code or limits are. And I do want to address the issues about the, the question about the 87-foot height and the FAA concerns. The conditions for the height are actually included, and FAA requires 98, so that any, that can be included in the conditions of approval when it goes to the architectural, for the development review committee. And then regarding the elevations and the findings, so let's go back to the elevations Most, these three elevations are basically from Comstock. So the applicant is here tonight, and they can probably respond to you about what would be visible from the Central Expressway, but I believe these are looking from both the east and the west. But I believe these are looking from both the east and the west portions of Comstock. And in terms of the findings, the findings supporting for the variance are basically because staff believes it's consistent with the new zoning code. So in the new zoning code, the new height would be 100 feet. So staff believes that therefore, the project would be consistent with future data centers that would go in place. And the LORD allows for 100 feet in height, so it's consistent with future development. For the parking, the applicant is providing bike racks and lockers, and so there would be very little traffic. I believe at the planning commission meeting, the applicant shared that there would be seven employees at the site. What I've also learned is that those employees will probably be at the max 20, and that there would be shifts that take place. So not all 20 employees will be on the site or there at the same time. And for the setback, the structure itself meets the requirements, only the fence doesn't meet the requirements. So the fence is an eight-foot-high fence, and that is requested for security purposes. So therefore, staff feels that this project is consistent with the general plan and with the zoning.
Thank you. Councilmember Jane, you have another question?
If I can add just one little bit of information, I apologize. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Manuel Pineda, Chief Electric Utility Officer, absolutely right, they do have a will-serv letter from SVP from 2021. I just wanted to add additional point of information that as part of the data center, what per the will-serv letter, they will have initially two 12 KV services at nine NVA. In power for them getting the third KV service, which would add an additional four-and-a-half NVA, there'll be certain requirements regarding their load they'll be required to meet. So absolutely, they have a will-serv letter with an initial two 12 KV services and a possible third 12 KV service after some requirements are met. Just wanted to add that as additional information.
Thank you, Director Pineda. Councilmember Jane?
Yes. I believe one of the things was they were moving the fence from a 15-foot setback to a 10-foot setback. Can you confirm that in addition to, I think, the fence height? And then my other question was that the number of parking spots, how is that determined? Is that determined for offices? Is it like a per-square-foot? Do we have a special parking standard for data centers? Because we know data centers have very few employees. And then did anyone consider putting in stacked mechanical parking if they do have a shortage of parking?
Really good questions. Okay, so the setback is basically going from 15 feet to 10 feet, so it's a reduction. And my understanding is that the reduction is to allow that eight-foot fence and that the variance is for the height of the fence. And the fence is determined to be a structure itself. As far as parking for data centers, because this is the classic code, there isn't necessarily parking itself for data centers. So the spaces that they are using are... Let's see. Oh, the parking ratio... Sorry, I'm just looking through my team's responses here. So the parking code... The parking ratio in the new code is one parking space for every 10,000 square feet. So in the new code, we do have parking requirements for data centers. So that would take... That would be basically 12 spaces for parking in the new code. So in the current code, 25 spaces are required, and we don't really have, you know, a specific requirement in the current code for... Sorry, in the classic code for data center parking. And in terms of stacked parking, you would do stacked parking if you don't have enough parking. But this is where the old code and the new code are bridging, so it's not anticipated based on the number of employees that they hope to employ there, that more than 21 spaces would be required. So in this case, we don't really anticipate that stacked parking would be a solution here. And I think I answered your questions?
My questions, Mayor. So I think you said that the design of this is still going to go to architectural review hearing.
Yes.
So we can't count on this being the aesthetics of the building? What could possibly change?
Sure. So there was a process that the applicant went through, and they've made several revisions to get to this design that they're proposing. In their statement, it is more... The design is more close to a Class A-type office building versus what your typical data center would look like. They've put in a lot of effort to make this look more... To have more of an architectural dialogue with the street and to have it look somewhat more activated. They've also put in a number of trees in the front and frontage improvements. So with the landscaping, as well as with the elevations that they're proposing, this is what we would take to the development review process.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. I don't see any other questions, so we're going to go now to the appellant. If you would please come forward, you have 10 minutes for a presentation. Thank you very much, Director. Welcome.
So, Mayor, councilmembers, thank you. I'm Chris Sumter with Prime Data Centers. I've also got Jonathan Gibbs, who heads up Design and Construction. And we also wanted to answer the questions around the taxes that were raised on the last meeting, so we brought our CPA, who's an independent consultant, so he can answer any of the tax-based questions, so we could go through that as well. So we'll go ahead and just jump right into the presentation. Do I just use this to go ahead and go through? All right. Perfect. So just wanted to answer Councilman Hardy's question. So this is the view that you're looking at from, you know, I don't know, I guess it would be to, you know, to my right. That would be what you would see from the Central Expressway. So if you're going to be coming from, you know, basically from the north, this is the view that you would see. And then when you're coming from the San Jose Airport, you would see the other corner from the other side as you're coming up. So this was facing directly out to Comstock, and then you've got Central Expressway right out in front of that. So that would specifically be what you would see. And again, you know, just from a design perspective, I think, you know, this is the design that I think we're ready to commit to, that I think, you know, we're ready to move forward with. You know, again, it's a Class A office look and feel, doesn't really have kind of your standard look and feel of a data center, and I think that's by design. We've gone through a lot of iterations with staff, and I think we're really proud of where it's gotten to at this point. We'll go ahead and go to the next one. So, you know, again, this is the existing furniture store today. You know, it's really gotten to a point now with the building that, you know, it's really gotten to a point of blight. It's really run down. We're ready to take that building down. You know, we'd like to get this project kicked off. We did buy the property back in 2021, March, and then you can also see the steps that we've gone through to get to now. So we've owned the building now for about four years to get to this point, and we would very much like to get, I think, everybody in this room activated and building this So again, just going through the neighborhood, you know, from a highest and best-use perspective, you know, it is straddled in between seven other data centers, a substation. You've also got the SVP Power Generation Station up in the corner, and then it's not highlighted, but you've also got the AT&amp;T switch that's up in the corner. So it is, for lack of a better term, in data center alley. I don't know what else you would put there if it were not for another data center, so I don't know what it would be. So I think, you know, what we're proposing is what most likely should be there. Jonathan, I'm going to let you jump in kind of on this piece.
Absolutely. Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, councilmembers. A couple of things that we want to highlight here. Sustainability is a huge passion of mine personally and of our companies. Prime Data Centers will meet and exceed the Climate Action Plan with 100% renewable energy, something we talked about wanting to highlight here tonight. And something to do with prime standards and something that is absolutely going to be part of this project will match 100% of the data center with renewable sources by 2020, 2030 for all of our projects and all of our operating data centers worldwide. Another point, too, when it comes to our data center, the designed closed-loop system, our WUE is less than 0.014. But for all the water we do use, which is very little, we stand outside of the industry and procure water restoration certificates equal to 120% of our total operating consumption. And last but not least, we have no plans for SMR or onsite nuclear power generation here in California.
So, and then just two other pieces to this, and we'll get into it in some of the further slides. Todd will go into, you know, the taxes and other financial benefits. But, you know, one of the things that we also do, and I know with a lot of data center companies, that will come into communities, and they don't really do a very good job of partnering. I think we do. I'm from the community, was born and raised here in the Bay Area, you know, so we do partner with all the, you know, local municipalities where we're building out data centers, and we'll go a little bit more into that when we get to that slide as well. So Todd, why don't you go ahead and jump in on the tax piece?
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. I think the numbers speak for themselves.
If you could go to the microphone, thank you.
I think the numbers speak for themselves. I'm not going to regurgitate what you're seeing in front of you, but happy to answer questions about them. But what I will say is that I was asked by Prime to come in and validate the numbers and ensure that the expectation was being set appropriately, which I've done. To let you know a little bit about my background on this and my experience in dealing with data centers, I deal with data center valuations across the country, means how they translate into local tax revenues, both property taxes and sales taxes, and quite a bit right here in California, extensively in Los Angeles County, but also in the state as well. To get to the numbers that you're seeing here, and again, these are just specifically focused toward the city of Santa Clara and the schools. Those are the only rates that were factored into what you're seeing before you. I looked at the project expenditures in detail, considered the classification of such expenditures for property tax purposes. How would I expect the Santa Clara assessor to look at the cost of constructing the data center and how the assessor would likely classify those costs for property tax valuation purposes? And then I also applied the appropriate percent good factors as prescribed by the California Board of Equalization, which look to be largely used by the Santa Clara County assessor. So I think there's a high element of consistency there. So from a method standpoint, these taxes, I think, are very reflective of what we could expect. But I would say that I think they're also very conservatively stated. What they also don't... What these taxes... Or, sorry, what these numbers don't factor into is... I'm sorry. What they do factor in is some conservancy in the sense of what might be some non-valued costs. Again, the objective here was to present you with numbers that, if anything, we thought we would exceed, not fall short of. Similarly, on the sales tax side of the equation here, we looked at this from the standpoint of the sales taxes that we would hope that Santa Clara City would see through the purchases of materials and equipment related to the project and purchases that would be made by the sole occupant of the data center, which would basically be server equipment and computers and peripheral. Taking into consideration not only what we would expect to be a minimum in terms of their purchases, we also factored in that this is technology equipment that refreshes on a fairly consistent three-to-five-year cycle. So not only are we looking at the sales taxes to the city of Santa Clara associated with the initial capital expenditures, both as it relates to the development of the data center, but also as it relates to the customer purchases. We... I'm sorry, I'm going a little long here, but let me just kind of pass the torch to that, and I'll answer questions.
Thank you.
We can get into any more questions on the taxes. So sustainability, you know, again, I think we've covered, you know, no nukes, which is kind of the biggest piece, that we can answer more questions on this. But I did want to get into, you know, really integrating it with the local community. You know, we did make a donation to the school district foundation, and I won't go through each of the different donations, but we have made some donations to different organizations within the community. One of the things that we do look to do, and I'll just point out, one of our partnerships with Elgro Village in Illinois, you know, I think similarly, they came in and said, "Well, are you going to come in and make a one-time donation?" And the answer was no. I mean, we've contributed to the mayor's, you know, reelection efforts. We sponsored a 10-year commitment to Concert in the Park series. We're doing multi-year-type donations to the city. So I do like to have it a little bit more collaborative and work with councilmembers to find out what does the city need, and then have you tell me where we can help. So, you know, more than open to sit down and figure that out. So, and that's it. So I wanted to be mindful, we've got 30 seconds left, and we're happy to answer any questions the councilmembers have.
Thank you. So councilmember questions? Councilmember Hardy?
Thank you. It was mentioned, so I will follow up on it. Are you using reclaimed water, the purple pipe? Is that the kind of cooling you're doing? You talked about giving back as much water as what you used. I wanted to make just a clarification on that, whether it was air-cooled or water-cooled, and if it was reclaimed.
Wait. Before you answer the question around here, this is what we do. We ask all the questions first and then ask you to answer them. So if you want... I don't know if you'll have a whole lot, but Councilmember Jane?
Can you speak to the noise levels from the data center? I think I heard different numbers from staff versus the planning commission.
And those are your two questions?
That's it?
That's it. Do you want more? Oh, councilmember... See, you asked for it now. Councilmember Park.
We like to talk.
Oh, no, here you go. Councilmember Park.
Yeah, so on the taxes, I noticed that you have approximately $3.5 million the first year, but then over the 15 years, it's only $15 million. Like, I understand that you may get some drop-off, or you may get some adjusted costs, but how does... How do we get from $3.5 approximately the first year to $15 million over the 15 years? Thank you.
And Councilmember Watanabe?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. So my question has to do with the executed union PLA that was referenced, and it's probably why a lot of the people are here this evening. But I was wondering, is there an apprenticeship program included as part of that PLA? And that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. Did you get all those questions?
I think we did.
Okay.
So, Councilman Hardy, so I think just to answer your question around, you know, recycled water, it's a great question, and I'm glad you asked it because it was one of the things I forgot to mention. We own the building two doors down, which is 1111 Comstock. And as part of the agreement with the city is we were going to bring the recycled water down that street. And one of the things that we agreed to was that when we built 1231 Comstock, we would tie all of that in together. So until this project gets approved, or not approved, that line is basically stubbed in the street, and it's sitting idle. So if this project gets approved, we will then be able to drop in the rest of the purple pipe. in the rest of the purple pipe, and then it will basically be set up to have the recycled water through the entire area. So yes, we would be planning to use the recycled water for that project.
Well, I want to address one portion. I'm not sure if he did, and I apologize for being repetitive, but the engineering, the engineering is going to come out a little bit. So, hold on. It is a closed-loop system. We pride ourselves on this design that was adapted very early on to the inception of our company. We use little to no water to operate this data center. We are extending that purple pipe, and we are using it for irrigation at the very least. Where we're looking at ways to be able to treat that recycled water to be able to use it in our system. With regards to the noise level, we came fully prepared to answer that question, including flying our acoustical engineer out here to support. We're currently, one, a couple of things. One, 70 dB A is what we're focusing on, coming underneath that level. 60 dB A is around the area where we will be. The other thing just worth noting is the adjacency to the Central Expressway. Needless to say, the 60 dB A mark is our intended noise level. It might be slightly increased when all generators are called on, which would not be a common occurrence. With regards to the PLA, I don't have an answer to that question. Yeah, but I'll find out. And I'll get back to you.
To address Councilmember Park's question about the taxes, the reason that you don't see a linear relationship, in other words, what you see in year one multiplied by 15 equals year 15 is really simply because of depreciation. Substantial portion of the development costs are going to be equipment in nature. And what we typically see is that portion of the development costs, things like generators and uninterruptible power supply units, things of that nature, are oftentimes, or typically, I should say, put on a 15-year percent good table. The other depreciation factor in the equation is the, the server equipment, the customer equipment. In year one, I would expect it to start on a 73% good valuation in accordance with the California Board of Equalization table. But over any three-year period, the average percent good for that equipment would be 50%. So that, that accounts for the, the drop off that you see and why you wouldn't see a linear 15-year multiple of year one.
I think that was the questions. I think that was it. Or, oh.
So I did just confirm, and yes, there are apprenticeship programs as part of the PLA.
Very good. Thank you very much for answering the questions. We are now going to the public. The public hearing is open, and each member of the public that wants to speak will have up to two minutes to give their testimony. So we're going to start with the cards that are here in the chambers. We'll start with Margaret Demarest. And then if I could ask Jeff Pratt and Jose Cabrera to queue up after that. Welcome, Margaret.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. My name is Margaret Demarest. I'm the president of Santa Clara Schools Foundation. Representatives from Prime Data Centers recently met with the Santa Clara Unified School District and the Santa Clara Schools Foundation to discuss the Prime Data Center project located at 21, 1231 Comcast, Comcast, Comstock Street. Stefan Alkins provided a detailed overview of the project and addressed all of our questions. The project is located about a mile and a half from Scott Lane Elementary School, which is further away than other data, existing data centers. The CEQA Environmental Impact Report, the EIR, did not identify any hazardous effects to any Santa Clara Unified School District schools. The construction of the Prime Data Center is anticipated to increase both secured and unsecured property taxes, resulting in long-term benefits to the city of Santa Clara and to the Santa Clara Unified School District. In addition, Prime Data Centers has committed, as they noted, a, to making a 20, oh, sorry, $50,000 donation to the Santa Clara Schools Foundation to support environmental literacy and sustainability innovations within the district. This generous commitment aligns with the foundation's mission to support Santa Clara Unified School District students, staff, and community by funding innovative programs and addressing critical resource gaps. We urge the city council to support this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Margaret. Next, we have Jeff, followed by Jose Cabrera and Juan Aguila. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Jeff Pratt. I'm here representing DevCon Construction. We've been doing business here in Santa Clara for over 40 years, and we're here to show our support for this project tonight. Some of the things that we like about the project, a lot of them have been discussed tonight, but one is, I don't think that, that the location could be any better as far as data centers go. I think it's perfect with all the surrounding data centers, Central Expressway on the south. It's also a very nice-looking building, and frankly, not all of the mar. This, you know, is just even beyond a data center. It's, it's just a nice, nice building, period. And then we also appreciate Prime's dedication and support for local trades. So thank you for your time, and we hope that you support the project this evening.
Thank you, Jeff. We have Jose, followed by Juan Aguila, followed by Eric Larson. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Happy holidays. Hopefully, everybody made some good memories this past Thanksgiving. My name is Jose Cabrera. I'm one of the field representatives with the Carpenters Union, and I have been a carpenter member for almost 30 years. Tonight, I'm here to urge and support the proposal of this data center facility. As you well know, an approval would mean thousands of hours for our members, good paying wages and benefits, along with training for our apprentices. You might remember that it wasn't too long ago that we had the same scenario with mission-critical realty for the 2805 Bowers Avenue Data Center. When it was then brought to your attention, the project was approved. We're asking for this end result to pass this project. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Jose. We have Juan Aguila, followed by Eric Larson, followed by Keith Silva. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Juan Aguilar. I am one of the members of 377. I work as a union worker. Basically, I am in support of this project, reason being because this will put a lot of my brothers and sisters into work, not just, not just in foundation, structural and miscellaneous, but also it'll help out apprenticeships. Like, we have a four-year apprenticeship where these guys actually learn how to work this iron, how to do most of this work. So that's one of the main reasons. And also, it'll help boost our economy in the community. Most of the guys are here are local guys from, from the area. So it'll boost our economy a lot more than hiring people from other, other areas and not getting the same results. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Juan. We have Eric Larson, followed by Keith Silva, followed by Erica Valentine. Welcome.
Hello, my name is Eric Larson. I'm with Iron Workers Local 377, and our union supports this project. It will put iron workers to work, doing rebar, structural steel, miscellaneous, architectural, ornamental, stainless steel. These are important construction jobs. They are high-road jobs that have good pay, good benefits. And that's really important for this area to help our families stay, pay the rent and keep our families afloat. I understand, yep, this is a PLA job, and yes, it will help apprentice. I'm a fourth-period apprentice, and hopefully I get to work on this job, maybe. But it, it's important in training up our workforce and developing construction workers for years to come. From a planning perspective, it appears that this project is a good fit for this particular neighborhood. It's consistent with the city's general plan and zoning specs. This is essentially a warehouse district, and this, this Prime Data Center is a good fit. So in closing, I want to encourage the city council to approve the Prime Data Center project. And I want to ask Iron Workers Local 377, if you could stand up. And thank you very much.
Thank you, Eric. Appreciate it. Very good. We have Keith, followed by Erica, followed by Scott Thomas. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, city council. My name is Keith Silva. I'm with Sheet Metal Workers Local 104. I'm currently business representative for our local. We have about 1,600 members here locally in Santa Clara County, 10,000 across Northern California. Data centers are good work for my trade. We're part of the mechanical system. So obviously, there's tons of cooling that's got to go in this building. As you're talking about, these closed-loop systems and got to keep these buildings cool. One thing that stands out to me about data centers, my background, I currently represent our members, but I've spent many years on data center work. Vantage Data Center is SC1 here in your, in your city. One thing that stands out to me was when COVID hit, I spent three days at home. On the fourth day, we were back to work on that data center. Why? Because it is critical infrastructure that needs to keep getting built. We can't build these things fast enough. Everybody needs it. I noticed you're having technology issues today.
Yes.
Data centers.
Needed a data center here.
Yes.
To help.
And, and I understand, I, I too watch the planning commission and understand that Santa Clara wants to beautify the city. But as you see, there's no, nothing else that's going to go in this block, right? We even put office space there that's going to sit vacant. Obviously, can't put housing there. It's in the wrong zone. Nobody wants to live next to all these data centers. And it is under a project labor agreement. It's going to put our members to work. There was an apprenticeship question. Yes, we're all union trades. We all have apprenticeship or crafts that will go to work on these projects. So I want to urge you strongly to support this project and put our members to work. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Keith. Erica, followed by Scott Thomas, followed by Ryan Jones. Welcome, Erica.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor and city council members. My name is Erica Valentine. I'm the political director for UA Local 393, representing the plumbers, pipe fitters, steam fitters, HVACR technicians in Santa Clara and San Bernardino County. However, I'm very familiar with the city of Santa Clara. Today, I'm here to ask you to vote yes on this project. I've been a part of this city as a student, as a resident, as an employee, and as a person who also built out several of the data centers on Comstock. So thank you for that. And today, I ask you to continue to say yes. The owner of this project comes readily prepared. It's already financed, and they already have a design that is aesthetically pleasing. I urge you to say yes to this project as they have. Since 2022, they have repeatedly said yes to Santa Clara. The owner has said yes to Santa Clara by purchasing the land. The owner has said yes by hiring, by agreeing to hiring local skilled and trained workers, by signing a local workforce agreement. Yes, to paying the taxes over $700,000 that will go back into the general fund. Yes, to supporting our children with a $50,000 donation to the local schools. And unlike most owners, this owner has continued to say yes since 2022, when they could have brought their investment somewhere else. So I'm asking you to please not let us lose this project here in the Bay Area. And on behalf of all of my members that would love to work on this project, I'm asking each and every single one of you to please vote yes tonight. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Erica. Thank you. Let's not do that. Thank you. Scott, followed by Ryan Jones, followed by Mark Mulliner. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Gilmore and council member. I just avoided a near disaster. I thought I couldn't find my glasses, but I have them now. So anyway, thanks. My name is Scott Thomas. I have been a Santa Clara resident for over 13 years. I am a member of UA Local 393, the plumbers and pipe fitters, for nearly 40 years, as mentioned. 25 of those years, I've worked for local Santa Clara contractors, most notably Ray Helwig Plumbing and Environmental Systems. I am also a proud volunteer, father of a son that plays sports at Santa Clara High School. I was a volunteer at Westside Little League, as a coach, board member, and proud to say past president. I really love the community of Santa Clara. In October, I sat in and gave public comment at the planning commission meeting that lasted nearly till midnight. So that was quite a trial by fire baptism, however you want to say that. I was frustrated and disappointed at the no vote, especially when I've really felt that public comment was overwhelming, and I didn't agree with a lot of the logic of some of those against the project. I applaud the contractor here for reaching out to the community and wanting to do, you know, so much good. So that said, as a resident, I'm asking you to support this project on the following reasons. To provide jobs for skilled and trained workers such as myself and many people that I know that live in Santa Clara that are part of our union. To support economic development in the city, what we have, as we have done in the past. Therefore, this project will not only provide a great tax revenue, as mentioned, 700,000 to the general fund. Lastly, it's not every day that we have an applicant, prime, that is fully funded, has an agreement for power, and is ready to put people like me and fellow residents to work. I ask you today to approve the Comstock data center. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Scott. Appreciate it. All right, we have Ryan Jones, followed by Mark Mulliner, followed by Jamie Vasquez. Welcome.
Well, those are both two really tough follows. Mine's very short and sweet. My name is Ryan Jones, and I'm a member of UA Local 393 and build projects in this area for nine years. Today is an opportunity for all of you to provide me and my family with the ability to work and live in this area. It's not often that owners come in already financed for the project and ready to build. It is time to say yes to building on Comstock. I ask each one of you to support and approve the Comstock data center, because it will provide me and numerous other voters in your area the ability to work where we live and secure the future. Please approve the Comstock data center project. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. We have Mark, followed by Jaime, probably. I said Jamie, sorry.
Good evening.
Followed by Emmanuel Zendejas. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. My name is Mark Mulliner. I represent this California State Building Trades. I'm the Northern Regional Director, and I encourage you to approve this project. This project will have, if it has 175 employees, they'll all be union members, according to the appropriate craft, and there should be around 35 to 50 apprentices on the job. And every affiliate is protected, and everyone will be union on this project, and local hire is huge. And I worked here 24 years ago, building a data center, and it was an honor to be here then, and it's an honor to be here now. And my career has evolved to where now I'm standing here in front of you, asking you to help the next generation have a project and have a place to go. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Next, we have Jaime, followed by Emmanuel, followed by Mary Grizzle.
Good evening, Mayor Gilmore and city council members. My name is Jaime Vasquez. I'm a proud field representative for NorCal Carpenters Union, Local 405. And I come here to, in support of Comstock 1231. So this project represents a crucial opportunity for our community. Not only does it bring valuable economic development to Santa Clara, but also aligns with our shared goals of creating quality jobs for local carpenters. Projects like this are vital to ensure that our skilled carpenters, many whom live right here in Santa Clara, have access to work that support their families and allows them to thrive in an area which such a high cost of living. Prime Data Center is fully aligned with the city's climate action plan, which mandates that all new data centers operate on carbon-neutral energy. Prime Data Center has committed to using renewable energy from day one, ensuring that this project contributes to Santa Clara's sustainability goals and environmental leadership. This investment enhances Santa Clara's standing as a hub for innovation while creating opportunity for local workforce. With your approval, we can ensure that construction is done the highest standard, using skilled union labor to develop, to deliver a project that benefits the entire community. I urge you to support the staff recommendation, sustain the planning commission appeal, and approve the necessary permits. This is a smart, responsible, and forward-looking decision that supports local workers, strengthens our economy, and helps achieve our climate goals. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jaime. Very good. Emmanuel, followed by Mary Grizzle, followed by David Beany.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Emmanuel Zendejas, and I'm a Local 104 Sheet Metal Union member. I'm proud to say that I am. I have been a member for 20 years, and it has its up and down with work. It comes with the territory. For the past four years, I have worked on data centers here in Santa Clara, one is which is right down the street, Vantage. And I'm hearing... And I'm hearing a couple of things about noise and height. Well, let me tell you a little bit about that. That kind of goes hand in hand. If you build these roof screens, it contains all the mechanical. Also, it diverts the noise. So you guys are complaining about something that's, it's probably helping the situation. Another thing is, I like working in Santa Clara. I'm from here. I want to stay working here. I want to hope to one day work on one of the prime locations. It's all similar, and it's good work for all of our members. I'm constantly giving out calls and dispatch from our union to constantly man up my job. I'm currently a general foreman at Vantage Data Center. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Emmanuel. Mary, followed by David, followed by Brian Goldenberg. Welcome.
I don't know if you're aware, but I'm speaking for two people. I'm going to say my speech first, and then...
City Clerk, do we have that? Just a second.
Mr. Von Reisfeld has requested that I read a letter.
I understand. Hold on one second. Do you have someone to give you an extra? You want an extra two minutes?
Do I need an extra two minutes to read somebody else's letter?
Can you do it in two minutes?
I can read mine in two minutes and his in two minutes.
That's four.
I know, but...
Does someone want to donate, who hasn't spoken, two minutes to Mary, so she can have four minutes? Okay, this gentleman up front here, and your name, sir?
Ed Torcias.
Okay. There, you got four minutes, Mary.
Thank you.
Thank him. Okay. Go ahead, please.
Madam Mayor, Council, our distinguished city manager, I'm here in regard to the data center at 1231 Comstock. This particular data center has been in the pipeline for years. For the following reasons, I'm recommending this council give it a thumbs up. It has listened to the public about making the architecture more pleasing to look at. If I'm correct, we have built approximately 60 of these data centers, but few, if any, have shown the great commitment to the community by supporting the Santa Clara Unified School District, donating to the Mission City Community Fund, as well as the Parade of Champions and other organizations. Again, they are the exception to the rule. It will also add millions to the city coffers. For the above reasons, I'm asking for a yes vote from our council. However, I am not for more data centers to be built here in Santa Clara, but I am making an exception to this one since it's already in the pipeline and because they have made such great commitments. Also, I want to thank all the union members for being here. My next speech is Myron Von Reisfeld's letter. And Mayor and City Council, I am writing to express my support of the city's staff recommendation for the construction of a data center to be built at 1231 Comstock Street in Santa Clara. The Prime Data Centers Inc. project offers significant benefits for our community, the local economy, as well as the environment. Many of you may remember my dad, Don Von Reisfeld, a former longtime Santa Clara City Manager and a proud council member, who was instrumental in the emergence of Santa Clara's electric utility system. From a young age, he instilled in me the important value power utilities to residents as well as businesses. Santa Clara has long, has long been a hub for technological innovation, and this data center will further solidify our city's position as a leader in the tech industry. This facility will help attract innovative companies and ensure that Santa Clara will remain at the forefront of technological advancements. I understand that Prime Data Centers is fully committed to implementing sustainable practices, ones which align with the city's goals to minimize carbon emissions and promoting green initiatives. There are economic benefits, too. Once fully operational, this project is estimated to contribute $700,000 annually to the city's general fund. Additionally, the project will create numerous jobs, opportunities in both the construction and operational phases, helping stimulate local economic growth. According to my research, Prime Data Centers has a reputation of being involved within local communities in which they serve. I am confident they will do the same in Santa Clara. In closing, I encourage you to support the staff recommendations and approve the conditional use permit and variances necessary for the construction of this property, of this project. Sincerely, Myron Von Reisfeld. Thank you very much, and have a great evening.
Thank you. Okay, if we could not, not for a re-speaker, please. Thank you. David, followed by Brian Goldenberg, followed by Ruben Camacho. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Gilmore and Councilmembers. Good to be back in these chambers. It's been quite some time. My name's David Beany, and I am a registered lobbyist. I'm here representing the over 35,000 men and women of the Santa Clara and San Bernardino Counties Building and Construction Trades Council. The Prime Data Center project is important to this community for a number of reasons. For working families, it's important because Prime Data Centers has made an enforceable commitment to be part of the high-road development and construction community. This project is going to support apprenticeships that lead to lifelong family-supporting careers, and the construction jobs on this project, as you've heard, will be well-paying ones filled by many of our local residents. We also support this project because the revenue it will provide to support the schools, the city, and the needs of the residents, many of whom are our members. While neighboring cities are in dire need of commercial development and the tax revenue it generates, Santa Clara has Prime Data Centers asking to expand its commitment to the city. This project will be an asset to the city of Santa Clara, and on behalf of the members and our unions of this council, I urge you to approve the project. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Next, we have, we've got Brian, followed by Ruben Camacho, followed by Greg. Welcome.
Hi, Mayor and Council. I'm in favor of this project, and I hope that you can support it as well. The main things that I like about it, that I see making this a solid project are the jobs that it brings, the efficient use of energy and water, and also the revenues that it brings to the city through utility charges, property taxes, and the money it brings to the Santa Clara Unified School District. Bottom line, the city needs, needs money. This is a great opportunity to, to fill up, to provide revenue, and I really hope you can support this. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Brian. Next, we have Ruben, followed by Greg, followed by Aureliano. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. First off, I appreciate your time and your service. My name is Ruben Camacho. I'm a lifelong member, citizen of Santa Clara. My parents and family moved here in 1934, and I actually am one of nine, and we all grew up and went to schools here in Santa Clara. So projects like this are exactly what our fathers, forefathers moved out here for a new beginning to new opportunities. I actually worked at the first data center. It was called Exodus Communications. I don't know if you're familiar or remember it, but they were the first one in City Santa Clara. So I'm very familiar with the storage service, storage sector. I followed that up, working at NetApp, another storage services company. Data storage is a consumable. It's going to always, there are always going to be more and more and more of it. Data centers, Santa Clara probably has the most data centers in all of California. We're the forerunners for that. I appreciate all the things that they have already done for Prime Data Center with the community. I am, I work for the city of Santa Clara. I work at the school district, and I also coach at Wilcox High School. So they've donated generously to various programs, as well as to my basketball team, to provide for our youth, which is very commendable, and I feel that they're going to be a great part of our community. I understand, I didn't realize the depth of the revenue that they will be generating, but in these times and needs, we really need it. So I really hope the staff, City Council, follows up with the staff's recommendations and follows up with this and votes yes on this project. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Ruben. Again, we have Greg, followed by Aureliano Ochoa.
Good evening. Thank you, Councilmembers. My name is Greg Hardeman. I'm a representative and recording secretary for the International Union of Elevator Constructors, Local 8. We represent the workers and apprentices that build elevators and service them in Northern California, and we're here to support, along with our fellow brothers and sisters here with the labor unions and building trades, to support this data center. I've seen the, the map up here. It doesn't seem like there's any other building that would fit in this location other than a data center, and I think that I urge you guys to support this project. It's going to be covered under PLA. Everyone there is going to be union, and there's going to be apprentices, as you heard, and we are in support of the project, and it will provide elevator services for our members for years to come with the data center. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Greg. Next, we have Aureliano Ochoa, followed by Wayne Machado. Welcome.
Thank you. Hello, Mayor and members of the council. My name is Aureliano Ochoa, and I represent the Heat and Frost Insulators, Local 16, and we're standing strong with the state and Santa Clara Building Trades. Please vote yes on this item. Help our members to, to work locally. Thank you.
Thank you, Aureliano. Now we have Wayne, and then I'm going to go online. Welcome.
Good evening. Hello, my name is Wayne Machado. I've been a Santa Clara resident for the last 14 years, and I am currently raising eight-year-old son with my wife and old quad, and I'm a member of Local 393 Pipe Fitters Plumbers Union, Santa Clara County, for over 20 years. And I currently work for Silicon Valley Mechanical, where we're currently doing two data centers in Santa Clara, and I've worked on previous other ones here, which it's, I almost feel guilty for some of the guys have to travel, so it's nice to be able to work close to home, not have to travel far in our community, down data center row, as you can see. Today, I'm just here to ask everyone for support of the Comstock Data Center. It would not, it would provide me, numerous other voters in our area, ability to work where we, work where we live, the future of our city, the 50K school foundation, and it would just invest in our, the future of our, our children. And like I said, I have an eight-year-old, and I just hope that everyone approves this. Thank you.
Thank you, Wayne. So we're going to go online now. We have Linda. Go ahead, Linda. Unmute yourself.
I hope I'm unmuted.
There you are, unmuted. You're ready. Go ahead.
I have three points, and they're all questions rather than any position. First question is, where does the heat go that is generated? Is it water? Where does the water go? Is it air? Where does the air go? Because you've got a huge heat sink from the data row. Other question is, what happens to the restaurant that is Athena on, very close to there? And what happens? The, the last one is, what happens to the school that's there? The private school that's the Islamic Center? So I will leave it to staff to figure out all about those. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Next, we have Mike. Go ahead, Mike. You're muted. There you go.
Good evening, Mayor Gilmore and Councilmembers. I'm calling in tonight in support of the staff recommendation to appeal the Planning Commission and approve a conditional use permit, the variance necessary to build the Prime Data Center. It's a, it's a great place for it. It's a nice-looking building. If you just look at three major factors, 15 years, the city will, and the school district will gain 44-plus million dollars. That's huge. That's property tax, that sales tax, and that's, that's huge for our schools. Second factor, 100% sustainable building, renewable energy, recycled water. What more could you ask for? Third factor is 175 union members will be employed for the years to come to build this building. But something that's not stated is after the building is built, union members will be used to modernize and update, to fix things that break. I mean, it happens in all buildings. I'm pleased that Prime Center, Prime Data Centers, they're an active corporate citizen. They've donated to several organizations, as you've seen, the, the Mission City Community Fund, the Parade of Champions, and other local groups as well. So I applaud you and hope that you all vote to approve this data center. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mike. Next, we have, it just says Planning Commission. So whoever that is, Planning Commission. There you go.
Hello, this is Lance Salem. I'm actually here as a, representing myself as a citizen, as a resident. The concerns and the conversations of the Planning Commission seem to have been muted and modified somewhat before being presented to the commission, or to the council. So I was hoping that we could clarify a little bit and say that, as a resident, I would love to see how Santa Clara is going to plan for the future with data centers. Right now, as has been stated by Mary, the number has reached 60. An individual data center is not a problem, or two, or 10, but we're at 60. When are we going to have too many? When is our infrastructure going to be impacted? When are the residents of the city going to start paying for the, the drain that the data centers pose to our resources? So hopefully, it can be seen that there was more to the conversation and deliberation than simply not liking the data center. I think it's more a concern that we, as a city, want to decide how we want our future to develop. Do we want paved-over data centers edge to edge? Or do we want to inspire other industry and residents and other aspects that can make the city more rich and more varied? Because right now, I think we've reached a limit, and I'm hoping that we can have this plan as a formal recognition of where we want to go as a city, and these conversations will not come to the council under appeal, instead will come pre-approved or predefined. That's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Lance. Next, we have Daniel. You're muted.
There we go.
There we go.
Hi, everyone. Hey.
Good evening, Mayor Gilmore and esteemed councilmembers. This is Daniel Meiberg, a longstanding supporter of Santa Clara and its communities. My apologies for not being there in person due to our personal matter. I wish I could have been there with all of you, suffering slightly, but hopefully, this won't go too late. I'm here tonight to request the council's support and approve a conditional use permit and variances necessary for the construction of the Prime Data Center at 1231 Comstock. With your approval of this project, I estimate Prime Data Centers will annually contribute about 6.4 million annually in taxes and operating fees to Santa Clara, which would be very beneficial to the city services provided. I'm also pleased to say that Prime Data Centers is an active corporate citizen that supports critical community organizations in Santa Clara, including, but not limited to, the Mission City Community Fund, Santa Clara Unified, and of course, the Parade of Champions, among others. Thank you for your time, and I want to thank the City Council for your time and consideration, and wish you all a wonderful holiday season. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. And with that, I don't have any other speakers. Is there anyone else here that, that hasn't spoken that wants to say something before we go to the appellant? All right, seeing none, none online. So I'm going to ask the appellant if they'd like to come forward and make any statements. You have five minutes, up to five minutes if you want to. It says for, if there's public comment opposed to the project. I heard very little opposition, some questions maybe that our staff can answer, but if you don't, you don't have to come forward if you don't have anything else to say. That's up to you. All right, I'll return now to our Director of Community Development. I think that there were a few questions from one of the, one of the online residents asked about where does the heat go when it's generated, asked about the Athena Grill, the restaurant and the school. I think they were talking about the Muslim Community Association, Muslim Community Association, MCA, which is a little bit distant, but I don't know if you're able to answer any of those questions. Director?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. In terms of... In terms of, in terms of where does the heat go, I would refer back to the applicant to answer that question and they can come up after me.
Okay.
In terms of where does the restaurant go, we are not aware of any active application for that site. So, that's up to each individual property owner. The Islamic School was analyzed as part of the environmental review and in general, there were no impacts in terms of noise or hazardous material that would impact the school. I believe the school is located approximately 1,100 feet away. So...
Okay.
Those were the questions that I heard online. Thank you.
Thank you. So, we have the applicant that can tell us where does the heat go? Welcome back.
Thanks for having me. I'm happy to answer that question. The heat is, so the heat comes off of the servers. It, in an air form, it comes up through the plenum and then captured by these units, we call them crawl units. The heat is then cooled and then recycled back into the data center. That heat is translated into water that is captured inside of a closed-loop system. So, there isn't any additional water that's used to cool the data center. Within that cooled-loop system, we use turbo-air-cooled chillers on the roof that use air against these V-shaped coils that will translate the heat back into, or the cool back into the data center. So, in essence, I think the question that was being asked was, do we use water to cool the data center? It's a closed-loop system. The heat is retained within the data center and cooled within the data center.
Very good. Thank you. Before we, I asked the council to close the public hearing. City manager?
Sure.
Do you have comments?
Thank you, Mayor. As we close out the staff presentation, just two quick comments. One, I think that there was a public comment from a member of the Planning Commission. I just want to note that the staff is planning a larger conversation on data centers and long-term planning around data centers for 2025. And so, I know we're talking about this particular data center, but know that that is coming. Lastly, in my introduction, I neglected to mention that our Community Development Director, Afshah, started two weeks ago. And so, I just want to thank Afshah for...
No one would have known that.
Yes, but just a wonderful job, having started two weeks ago and sort of picking everything up and doing a lot, a deep dive into this project. So, I know how hard it is to begin a project midstream and carry it to the city council. So, I just want to thank her for that.
Thank you, Director. All right, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion?
Motion second to close public hearing. Please register your vote. And that passes unanimously with those on the dais. That was, that was... I've never had a clap to close a public hearing. That was just to close a public hearing. Okay, we're done. No. All right. Let's see. Vice Mayor Becker, you're first up.
Thank you, Mayor. So, I appreciate staff and the applicant working together to come up with a project that is appealing to the eye, that will fit in with the neighborhood. I appreciate that, you know? I appreciate the work that has gone into the outreach of getting that project moving forward. You know, one thing I do want to mention a little bit before I go a little further is, I'm glad that the Planning Commission Chair, Lance Salam, called in tonight and I'm glad that the city manager addressed some of that. But what I noticed is in the last few years on the city council, that there's, has been a disconnect between the city council and the Planning Commission on various issues. From anywhere as an advisory body, I should look to them for advice. And I feel that we should also collaborate with them. And I see that disconnect. You know, I would be very frustrated when I was on the Planning Commission, when the city council would not listen to a lot of our recommendations we would make. I know, for example, there was one project, the Hunter Strong Project, that we made a lot of recommendations on and we felt like the city council was ignoring us. However, Councilmember Debbie Davis, at the time, someone I replaced in 2020, went out and hit pretty good home runs and pushed for a project that was beneficial for the city of Santa Clara. She noted the Planning Commission and she also noted dedicated residents. And I looked towards what she was doing as a council member and working with the Planning Commission. And I see sometimes that disconnect when it came to data centers. I'm not here to punish this applicant in any way, form. In fact, I'm going to be making a motion to approve the following. But first, in what I feel is personally, I think it's the potential to collaborate with the Planning Commission, which is our advisory board. And I'm glad the city manager brought that up because that is one thing that I was going to be elaborating on, is that when I looked at the notes of the Planning Commission and I saw, you know, a lot of what Commissioner Biagini, Commissioner Chair Koo, Vice Chair Boza, and Chair Salam were saying, I agree with them about planning a process and planning the future. And so, I do encourage our city management. I do see in the notes also that Chair Salam had announcements and other items that send questions to the planning manager, Leslie Xavier, for an upcoming study session on data centers. I know I have been a bug and probably pretty annoying about it to the city manager about having a study session on data centers. I'm not against data centers. I just think that there's a time, a place, and where we should plan it for the future. And again, I'm not going to take this out on this applicant. I think this applicant has done what is appropriate to do it. I understand the Planning Commission's concerns and I think the Planning Commission's concerns should be heard. And I think we should have that longer conversation and that's why I'm glad the city manager brought that up, to bring that up in the year 2025. And I encourage the Planning Commission to continue to reach out and find a way to have that study session. And I encourage, because I only have maybe two more meetings here. So, I'm encouraging my council colleagues to really establish that and having that conversation. Because I know not only the Planning Commission wants to have that conversation in the city council, but I know the residents want to talk about it too. So, with that, I am going to make a motion to adopt a, sorry, make a recommendation for a project approval for items. Do I have to name them one, two, and three, or am I able to say?
It's to sustain the appeal and approve the project.
And the negative deck?
Staff recommendations, one, two, and three.
Yes. So, staff recommendation, one, two, and three. Do I have to name them all out? City Attorney, or do I have to, can I say one, two, and three?
The, if, maybe we can get the slide back up there from staff's presentation, because that'll outline them.
Yeah, let's make it easier for the city clerk to put it in the motion. It's a staff recommendation. Can he just say staff recommendation? One, two, and three? Sustaining the appeal and approving the project?
He can, Madam Mayor. We'll get it up there in the meantime, so the, the public and, and the clerk can see it. There it is.
There we go. Perfect.
And now, you can say staff's recommendation.
Yes. So, I'll make a motion for staff's recommendation of items one, two, and three. And I appreciate all the work that you guys have done on this and thank you for everybody who came out tonight.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Next, we have Councilmember Jane, followed by Councilmember Hardy.
Yes, I think we are required to consider findings and conditions of approval. And if we have to put those in, I would say that the findings are that the new zoning code doesn't require 25 spaces. It only requires 12.
Do we have to do that, City Attorney? If we have that staff recommendation?
Yeah, you, you actually don't need to do that. Madam Mayor and Councilmember, you could certainly supplement the record, but staff does have the findings presented in the resolutions for your approval, both for the CUP and the variance. But certainly, as part of your comments, you could add to what you're thinking and what the basis for your decision is, but you don't need to add more formal findings.
Just, my experience from Planning Commission was we had to come up with our own findings.
It's already in the resolution.
I understand.
Yep, like, like I said, you could supplement the record with things that you think are the basis for the decision that you're making.
Okay, I guess I don't need to do that. Thank you.
Councilmember Hardy?
I will just say, four of the council members up here, three that are still sitting, started on the Planning Commission, so we're very familiar with a lot of this. And I think this applicant and this whole project got caught in some crosshairs and unfortunately, I think was hit with some generalizations, which bothered me. And I will, I was, I read the planning minutes and puzzled over them because I was really a little bit surprised. So, I'm glad that the applicant decided to very quickly ask for a, I guess it's not a reconsideration, did the appeal and I, we, we have so many people here and everybody seems to agree. Where's the cake? We should have a party. Thank you.
All right, very good. Councilmember Park?
Yeah. Thank you very much and thank you very much for the applicant and everyone else that's coming out, that came out to be here. I remember when a lot of you came out during the last, last data center approval as well. So, thank you very much for, for your time. I'm actually going to go with what Councilmember Jane talked about, which is findings. And when I'm looking at the sheet, the general plan consistency, talking about the FAR, which is 1.88, exceeds the FAR of 1.0 by almost double. And the findings I cannot make are provide adequate public services and facilities, infrastructure and amenities to serve the new employment residential growth, because there is no appreciable new employment. I mean, the employment that we're talking about, and this is why the majority of the public is here, I'm going to say it is, it is good work. We need this kind of work. But also say that almost any project that we have here of this size would provide this kind of work. I'm not against, I'm not against getting work for you guys and girls. I'm, I'm looking at this project. Again, create jobs for the areas, remote, maybe. I hear about 175 union jobs and long-term, maybe some of those would be for updating and maintenance and fixing, and I hear that. But I'm looking at 112,000 square feet of space to support 200 workers. It's very important, 200 workers. But I'm thinking from the city perspective, is there a use that we can put in 112,000 square feet that would support more than 200 workers? I'd like to think that there is. Again, property and sales taxes? I'm looking at the numbers and I think that almost any project can provide these kinds. I mean, I hear, I see some head shaking, but I'm thinking, you guys got to look at, at what you can do. I mean, nothing else is going to go here, not with that attitude. I mean, we need to find the best uses for this land that create the most jobs and create the most revenue for Santa Clara. And I think that this project, because I, I looked at the Planning Commission, I did not talk to any of the Planning Commissioners about this, because I wanted this to be independent. But it sets a precedent for that area, which is currently not data centers. It's got some uses that are pretty social, right nearby. And I'm kind of concerned that this will likely create an opening for more data centers here. Right. Work with existing Santa Clara businesses to retain and expand employment opportunities and strengthen the existing tax base? I can't make a strong finding for that. Hearing about all the donations and hearing about how it, how it comes in, I really appreciate that the applicant did that. Hearing, you know, how it's contributed to the schools, to political campaigns, to, you know, Mission City Community Fund. These are all things that I think are very interesting, but at the same time, I don't want to set a precedent, which was a very difficult thing for me to do with the 2805 Bowers. I spoke on that too. But it's very hard for me to accept that applicants will come in and essentially buy their way into uses in this city. I really thought about my role here in this, in this last election. I've talked to a lot of you sitting in the, in the audience. I support a lot of you sitting in the audience. And a lot of people in the audience supported me. And right now, when I look at Santa Clara, I need to look at where do we want to go with Santa Clara? I really wish that the city manager and the city, we had this talk about data centers a year ago, two years ago, because this, this question about data centers didn't come up in the last few months. It, it has been hovering over the city like a cloud for years. But when we talk about best uses for this land, I want a project here. I'm not so sure that a data center is where, is the precedent that I want to set in this area. Like, I know we've got another Silicon Valley power, power project right next, right next to this site. And I know that it'll be very unpopular if I vote against this, even if it gets approved. But I would like to think that in the future, for any other development on Comstock, that when we have a great project with lots of jobs, same opportunities, better opportunities for the union workers, that you'll remember that too. That said, I won't be supporting this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Watanabe?
Thank you, Mayor. I like this project because it checks a lot of boxes, okay? And, and that's what makes it a good project. I'm going to start out by telling you that I am from a family where my father was a carpenter and he worked for Local 608 in New York City until he retired. And so, I appreciate union work, I appreciate union jobs and what they provide for families. So, I really like the fact that 175 union members are going to have a good-paying job for X amount of years until the next project comes along. It may not necessarily be a data center, but there's going to be another good job out there. But in the meantime, you have something to be able to go to every day and keep your families provided for. What I also like about this project is the economic development and the tax revenue couldn't be expressed enough tonight. And very importantly, it meets our climate action plan, which I know the city has worked very hard on, and this is definitely a very environmentally friendly project. I hear the concerns about the restaurants that are nearby. I know there is the Athena Grill, there are some other, like, small mom-and-pop restaurants nearby, but from, you know, when I go through that area, you know, around the lunchtime hour, I see a lot of folks from Applied Materials and a lot of other businesses nearby that are, you know, utilizing those restaurants and providing for them and in terms of revenue and keeping them in business. So, and then looking at the picture of this location and what is around it and how you just have this little square, and like somebody said, you can't put... this little square, and like somebody said, you can't put housing there, you can't put schools, you can't put retail. Really, the best, highest and best use of this property is a data center. And so I think Prime has done a great job putting together a project, a very nice-looking project, to just add to the aesthetics of this area and continue to make, it may not be what some people call beautiful, but it is. It's a beautiful project that will really benefit that area along Central Expressway and continue to benefit each other, the data centers around it. So I am in support of this project, and thank you for bringing it back to us on appeal, and hopefully it'll make it across the finish line tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Jane.
Yes, I, of course, will be supporting this project because the jobs that it brings, you know, I heard Wayne Machado talk about being able to live in the old quad. It is very expensive to live in Santa Clara. And we need to provide good jobs, union jobs, to people so that they don't have to commute from Tracy or Merced or anywhere. They should be able to live here and have the quality of life that pretty much everyone else has here. The apprentices is great. Of course, I pushed very hard on the climate action plan to make sure that data centers don't have a terrible environmental impact, so that is really good to see in this project. And then when I was on Planning Commission, we railed on the ugliness of data centers, and I think data center companies are coming around to understand that aesthetics is important to Santa Clara. And the best part is that they got all their approvals before they bought the property. They had the "will serve" letter, and they had the approval of the fire department. And so I'm supporting this project.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Becker.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of additional comments. I do appreciate what my colleague, Councilmember Park, was saying, you know. I do see his points in disagreeing. I do see, you know, it takes me back to 2010 when we were building the stadium, and it was about creating jobs, and it was just jobs building the stadium, not the jobs inside. And I know that was a concern for a lot of people, but in this perspective, I see it as a little different. At the same time, I do see your concerns about that in the long run. You know, I know that you mentioned about its site. Again, this area, the site, it does have current data centers surrounding it, so I know my biggest concern would have been if it was the first setting a precedent, that would have been my big concern. But seeing that it's surrounded by data centers, it's going to fit in with the neighborhood. And going back to, I'm glad that Councilmember Jane brought this up. Not only that, is I know Councilmember Jane and I were pretty disappointed when we found out that the Owens Corning property was going to be used for Amazon Resources. That really concerned me as well. But I know the biggest thing that Councilmember Park has elaborated on, and I do see that concern, but it's going to have to be that long-term discussion that I hope that you take forward, or others on this council take forward, into establishing that conversation of that long-term plan for the city of Santa Clara and data centers. But again, it fits in with the neighborhood, so I see that concern that you've had, but it doesn't set a precedent. But I do agree with Councilmember Jane on those other facts, and I'm glad that he brought up this recently. But anyways, just besides the point, but I do support this project, and I just hope you continue to push forward for that joint study session between the Planning Commission and the City Council.
Thank you. And I just want to say that I was actually surprised that the Planning Commission decided to take a stand on this particular property because of the location. I don't see what else you would put there. And I think that in, you know, reading about the discussions there, I think they were going off into areas that they shouldn't have been talking about at the Planning Commission level, more policy-type discussions that we have here at the council level. So I, you know, I love the fact that there's going to be local labor working here on this project, and, you know, we're in the center of Silicon Valley, and one of the important attributes that Santa Clara has is Silicon Valley power, and the fact that we actually power Silicon Valley here from Santa Clara. And I'm really proud of that. And I think that the data centers have just gotten better and better, cleaner and cleaner, more attractive as the years have gone on, and they provide a, you know, steady work for our community. They are low-impact to the community, they don't cause traffic, there's very little crime, it's just a very, you know, low-impact use in industrial areas or R&amp;D areas, light industrial areas that are set aside for that. And I think that somebody mentioned sometime they don't want the residents to be subsidizing the data centers. Well, that mathematically will never happen. So I don't know why that is still out there a lot, but I think that, you know, it's the right thing to do to approve this, and I don't think we should hesitate. I'm going to support this project. City Manager, did you have something before we vote?
Yes, Mayor. Just a clarification. It's been said a few times that the Corning site or the former Corning facility will be an Amazon data center. Just want to be very clear, the property is in ownership of Amazon. There is an active application for a potential data center and a warehouse that has not been fully reviewed. It is not approved. There are also significant power issues that would need to be worked out before a data center could go there. And so it is ownership, it is a application, but very much not approved and not through the entitlement process.
All right. Vice Mayor Becker, do you have something to say before we vote?
Yeah, thank you, City Manager, for clarifying that and specifying. But again, Councilmember Jane did mention, and I forgot to mention that, which is about the look of the data centers. And I appreciate, again, how you guys made this look with our community. I know in the past that Chair Salameh and I were on the architectural review, and we had data centers that were coming to us that were just square boxes, and they were like, well, we don't want to make a change to it. We said, we're not going to approve your project unless you start making something that fits in with our community. And they did. They started a precedent, and you guys have delivered on this. So I appreciate Councilmember Jane bringing that up, as well as Chair Salameh of the Planning Commission for working with me on making this happen.
City Clerk, when you're ready. We have a motion and a second. Staff recommendation.
Thank you. May I know who was the second, or I didn't hear that?
Karen, were you the second?
Yes. Yes, I was the second.
All right. Please register your vote. And that passes five to one of those on the dais. We're going to take a 15-minute break. Thank you. And thank you all for coming.
Could I ask everyone to take their seats, please? We've got the rest of the agenda to go on. Okay, the next item we have on our agenda is item five, action on fiscal year 2023-24 budget year-end report and approve the budget-related, approve the related budget amendments. City manager.
Sure, thank you Mayor Javon Grogan, city manager, members of council and the public. Tonight's fiscal year 2324 year-end budget report includes the number of actions necessary to close out last fiscal year's budget with higher than expected revenues approximately 5% higher than budget and departmental expenditures savings, so just under 3.4%. The city ended last fiscal year with excess funds to the amount of $17.6 million in the general fund. Each year, as you know, the city strives to end the year on budget or slightly below the budget, and this year is no different. These additional dollars provide essential one-time resources that are typically used for one-time needs and fulfilling our rainy day reserves such as our budget stabilization reserve, which mindful has yet to recover from pre-pandemic levels. To replenish our reserves tonight, the item before you also includes a recommendation to allocate a portion of the excess funds to our reserves as well as a recommendation to allocate reimbursements that we've received from FEMA to those reserves as well. As the city builds these reserves, they will be critical as we continue to address the city's structural deficit. Tonight's presentation will be provided by Ken Lee, the city's finance director. He will provide a high-level summary as well as all of the key recommendations that are before you tonight. Ken?
Thank you, welcome Director Lee.
The opportunity to talk about the close of our fiscal year 2324, and this is actually the second item regarding the close of that fiscal year. The first item was on the consent calendar regarding our financial statements, which the council approved. And so this item here summarizes the budget year-end report. And before I get started, I just wanted to acknowledge a lot of hours from our staff go into both reports, our accounting team led by Lynn Lamb, our budget team led by Margaret McCann, and just the hours, countless hours of work that they've done, so I wanted to acknowledge them before I got started. By way of agenda, as the city manager mentioned, there's a handful of technical adjustments included in this report. The report includes over 100 pages of budget amendments that were too long to list for your recommendation, even though there were a lot there. I will talk about how our general fund performed, both revenue and expenditures. The city manager alluded to some of that performance already. Distribution of general fund fund balance, that's always good news in the year in the black with a little bit of extra dollars. I wouldn't be a normal finance director if I caveat it caution with that because we do have a structural deficit that we have to tackle, and I'll talk more about that plan. We have over 70 funds in the city, so I'll talk about some of the highlights in the other funds, including the recommended adjustments. And then I'll carefully walk through the recommendations and the allocation for select allocations to very specific items and the need for those items, and walk through the various attachments in your report today. Want to spend some time on this chart. I think it's important to note, why are we here today with hundreds of budget appropriations? Your fiscal year 2324 ended in June 30th, and when the council adopted both the capital budget, two-year capital budget, and amended the operating budget, those were based off of estimates that were performed earlier that year. We released that proposed budget in May. So when the results come in at June 30th, we need to make changes to every appropriation in every fund to true up a lot of those costs. And so that's why we're here today. We've completed that reconciliation, closed out that fiscal year. And so you'll see grants, you'll see project dollars, you'll see the report out on how each fund performed. And then we have kicked off internally our development of our two-year biennial operating budget that would be released in May and before the council in June of 2025. That budget at the current time contemplates a balancing of six and a 12-year million-dollar shortfall in those two years. We're planning to update those numbers with our forecast update early next year, and typically we report out to the council an update of that forecast. And then, as the city manager mentioned, as I've reported out in every opportunity I can with the budget, we have our 10-year structural deficit that we've made good progress on over the COVID years and recovery, but we still have more work to do. We will be kicking off a larger project shortly after the release of that two-year budget to address that, and that will entail a lot of work effort. And so the items in this report are important to bridge that gap. The one-time dollars that we're recommending to allocate to reserves will be important to bridge the gap until we can address the ongoing problem with our budget. By way of overview, I touched on some of this. It includes a performance for every single city fund, so about 70 funds adjust the current year budget, 2425 budget, based on our actual revenue and expense performance from last year. In the general fund, I know a lot of the focus here is on some of the additional dollars that resulted, and so what we've done is we've made recommendations that align with prior council policy around our reserves. And then some of the dollars that appeared after the budget was approved and is not included in the current budget, we've recommended to add to our budget stabilization reserves just for the time being until a broader context of both the priorities and the two-year budget would be before the council, where the council can decide on the allocations of all budget dollars. Just a reminder of budget and fiscal policies, especially for those in the public wondering why our recommendations are to sock away dollars into our reserves. Our budget policy of having a balanced budget, we achieve that through the budget process with recommendations, and a lot of times we draw on some of these one-time dollars. Our budget stabilization reserve, our council policy, is a three-month rainy day fund of 25%. Through COVID difficulties and the pandemic, that was temporarily lower to 15%. I'll talk more about where we're at with the recommendations in this report. We do have a pension stabilization reserve or a trust fund. We set aside typically in the good years, 1% of our unfunded liability to that. There's a long ways to go, but a good-sized down payment to that liability. And then our capital project reserve, our target of 5 million currently, we have a little bit over 10, a very modest amount compared to our large need, and hopefully with some of the other actions or geo bond that is looking likely, potentially certification will provide an influx of some dollars in that area. From an overview standpoint, just bottom line, our general fund ended in a solid position, and all our funds did well and wanted to highlight in the general fund, $17.6 million allocated to different both items for funding as well as our reserves. That was due to net revenues of 10.3 and expenditure savings of 7.3. All the other funds generally ended within estimated levels. We have an attachment, three, that lists out all the fund balances and their changes. We have later in this presentation, a new section that I'll talk about, just our enterprise fund reserves. We had established some policies around funding goals for those reserves, and I'll give a status of where we're at with our enterprise funds. So as we dive a little bit deeper in the general fund, revenues of almost $300 million to 96.9 ended roughly 5% above budget. 3 million of that is from very restricted fees or advanced planning fees, technology fees, the gains from our pension stabilization reserve. So when you look at those restricted funds and what's allocable from a fund balance perspective, it was 10.3 to the good on the revenue side. On the expense side, about 3.4%, a very narrow margin here, about 10% below budget, $10 million, excuse me. About 3 million of that was assumed in the adopted budget as carryover projects, so when you net those savings out, 7.3 is available to allocate, and so that's where you get the 17.6. The recommendations in this document report include 7.5 million of that dollars, of that 17.6 towards budget stabilization. We do have recommendations to add additional money from other sources I'll talk about to the budget stabilization reserve, 5.4 to the pension trust, that's the 1% I talked about in the prior policy. And then on any given Tuesday before the council, sometimes there's a need to allocate funds, so we've started just leaving a little bit of money in the ending fund balance to provide for that. Some capital project recommendations included in this document, we have multiple ongoing efforts with our PeopleSoft ERP system. We call it our firm system, that's our financial HR management system. A million dollars here. You'll see a couple items before the board later this year with regards to some task orders to make improvements on that system, upgrade that system. And so we're working closely with our HR and IT department, and so this is just a down payment for some of those needs. In the library, central library, there's a project underway to amend and fix some of the concrete settling and ADA improvements in that area, so working with our public works department, adding some funds here to fully fund that project. And then that third bullet here in anticipation of the passage of the geo bond, a million dollars, knowing that within our cost controls included in that bond measure, staffing costs are a very limited portion of that could be spent from bond dollars, so we do need to set aside here as part of that implementation of that project as it gets underway. On the revenue side, when you look at where the general fund performed well compared to our estimates and our budget, property tax continues to do very well, and I have it on the next slide, I'll show how that's trend. Sales tax, TOT tax, both very volatile items that through recovery and based against our estimates slightly outperformed there. Fees for services, these are areas where we do include some restricted fees. I'll talk about COUPA, which is our fire department. They partner with our county and our hazmat inspections for facilities that contain hazardous materials, and so our recommendation here is to set aside some of those reserves, restricted dollars to a separate fund that we've started with some of the development areas. Interest, you'll see a portion there just from our cash pool as well as our pension trust, and then, so overall, $13 million to the good on the revenue side. When you look at a historical performance of general fund revenues, our property tax has done very well. This shows the first full fiscal year prior to the pandemic, and on an average clip there, 55% over those six years or so, roughly 9% on average or so. Sales tax, a difficult revenue category, just with the internet sales and how that's reported, a little more than flat, roughly 1% growth annually when you look at overtime before COVID. TOT, you see the large 90% dip. We've almost recovered to pre-TOT levels, but also includes the increases that we've implemented over the last three, four years through the ballot, so not quite from an activity standpoint back to where we were, but strong performance there. And then, as we've heard through Director Panetta, some of the growth in SVP as the 5% transfer is allocated to the general fund, really between that and property taxes carried us through a lot of the pandemic revenues that have jumped down and back up. On the expense side, want to highlight here roughly $10 million on a gross level. All departments, except for a couple, were within budget. All departments, except for a couple, were within budget. Salary and benefit savings primarily from vacancies and churn within an organization as large as ours, generated $4.8 million. That's a significantly smaller number than a year ago. And I have on the next slide, I'll talk about how we're doing with hiring. And then, within our supplies, services, and materials, we always work, both working with our procurement department and departments, just making sure that everything we go out for is the most efficient from a cost perspective. And so we had some savings there, 5.4 million or so overall on the non-personnel side. When it comes to hiring, I know through recovery of COVID, it's a challenge among many public sector agencies, many companies, a challenge of obtaining and filling vacant positions. We're not alone in that. We've made considerable progress. So as of July 1st, 2024, we sit at it overall, this is not just a general fund, this includes all city vacancies, 12.8%. But just highlighting this trend as it contributes to general fund vacancy savings, that's down from almost 16%. And so when you look at active recruitment, it's about 90, 16 as needed. There's been compensation studies and classification studies that have gone through civil service and back through the board to align some of the classifications to the work. And then, from July to mid-November, this is just this current fiscal year, showing that we've hired 32 new hires and 20 promotions versus 28 separations. So we continue to make progress against the very challenging labor market. So I want to shift gears here to talk about the excess funds, we'll call it, the $17 million or so in the general fund. There's a handful of technical adjustments included in this document on here with regards to the city's Commerce and Peddlers Plaza. We had an allocation for some of the capital improvements at that facility. We had carried those funds over, but, you know, based on timing of when those contracts came through, we actually spent $1 million of that. So we're truing that up, so to speak, and then setting aside a new project, knowing that there will be ongoing capital needs, just as the dollars generated from those, the rent at that facility will be allocated to maintain that facility. I talked about the Fire COOPA Fund that we're recommending to just establish a new fund. Those are restricted dollars currently co-mingled in the general fund, about $400,000 that we're setting aside to that fund. And then, you'll see trickled throughout this document, many of, as projects are closed out, capital projects, monies returning to and from their original source, so that technical adjustment here for that last item. There are recommendations for investments in several areas in the HR department, working very closely with some of the ongoing efforts around safety, around our recruitment efforts. On the prior slide, talked about our improvements in recruitment. And then, with many of the labor groups coming up for negotiations, some dollars, working with the HR director on the need for the upcoming year, roughly $340,000 or so. And the addition of a couple positions, these do not require additional dollars this fiscal year, but with regards to a comprehensive review of our safety programs across all city departments, a need here really to allocate some positions and resources to kick off and implement a more robust program with regards to safety. And then, in the city clerk's office, with regards to the election, when we got the final bill or estimated final bill from the county, a slight increase needed to augment Nora's budget there. On the, continuing on, I talked about a couple capital project areas. So the library concrete replacement projects around Central Library, the PeopleSoft upgrades, you'll see those task orders and contracts come through, the geo bond implementation. So this is just a set aside for staffing costs that we anticipate to kind of supplement that initiative as it gets off the ground. Some of the technical adjustments here, just returning funds to the capital project reserve. I mentioned the $7.5 million out of the 17.6 to the budget stabilization reserve, $5 million to the pension trust, and roughly 2.4 to the ending fund balance. This document also includes, to the budget stabilization reserve, some FEMA dollars. Our city through COVID, through the two or three years of COVID, spent over $4 million out of the general fund for COVID activities. We are continuing with the very detailed process of working with FEMA to get some of that money reimbursed. And we've been notified about 1.4 is on its way. And so this is putting that back into the reserve. And then, with regards to some of the stadium dollars that have been part of prior conversations, this is the general fund side being allocated to the reserves. So when you look at reserves, I know I've talked about reserves a lot and the importance of them from a budgeting standpoint. The actions in this report, when in total of all the actions here, increases the budget stabilization reserve by $16.2 million, roughly 18% to close to 24%. Still shy of our 25% council policy, but very good news to refill that bucket. It's slightly below $80 million clip we have pre-COVID, but on its way. Capital projects reserve, a balance there of about $8 million. And then pension stabilization reserve, in the general fund, $35 million. When you look across all city funds, close to $60 million in that pension trust fund. That's a significant increase from when we started about a decade ago. So the next two slides, I want to highlight, I know there's a lot of numbers here, but I'll just point out the trends here. Over the last five years, our utilities and our enterprise funds have several reserves that are by policy set aside. Our operations and maintenance reserve, that's our goal here of three months of operating rainy day funds. Our infrastructure reserve, anywhere from 10% to 20% of an annual need. And so that's a small bucket there for emergency items that might come up. Rate stabilization reserve, 10% of annual revenues or so. So highlighted to the far right, I know it's difficult to see that we have, you know, our goal levels. And based on the items in this report, happy to report. Anything in red, so water, O&amp;M reserve, infrastructure, still some ways to go. It takes a while to build up those reserves, especially through the drought years. But in green there, where we're meeting our council policies on our reserves. And so you can see that over the last three years, with strong fiscal management across those enterprises, good efforts to meet our council goals. On the second slide here, SVP, going through some challenging times with commodity prices there a couple of years ago, and with this report, filling some of those buckets. Still some ways to go with the infrastructure, there's a lot of needs there. And then, new on this slide, Convention Center, as we've seen some surplus dollars from the last couple of years, enough to at least set aside an O&amp;M reserve here for the Convention Center. So with that, the next few slides, I wanted to go into some detail about the attachments before you. I know 100 pages, a lot of budget adjustments. Attachment one includes retroactive budget ratifications from 2324. With, you know, hundreds and hundreds of appropriations across the city, we always have a handful that either get by us or unexpected. And so in some of them, most of them are good stories in the Convention Center Fund, for example. Because of higher-than-expected activities, you know, higher activity results in higher expenses, but also higher revenue to offset it. Challenges with regards to some of the overtime and some of the outage time in the fire department, we augmented that budget at the end of the year, missed it by roughly 200K. So looking for authorization there. And then, some of the other areas, 11 appropriations in other funds, some of those are grants, reimbursements, developer contributions, interest, and so recognize those in allocating the revenue and expense tied to those. Attachment two includes adjustments of fund balances. This is both the starting fund balance and the ending fund balance for all city funds, all 70 city funds in the budget, based on the timing of both when the budget's approved and how we close out the year. General fund adjustments to close out and allocate the $17.6 million to distribute some of the stadium and FEMA dollars that wasn't in the July 1 budget. Carryover true-up, so as we estimate those capital project carryovers, we do a good job guessing, but when the actual dollars hit the books, adjustments are needed. Grants and donations, as those dollars are not spent and carried over, those are included as well. And so, recommendations before you, number one, note and file, the budget report. Number two, just council authorization of the new COOPA fund, as I talked about. Technical, just set aside of restricted dollars for what we collect through the county for fire inspections of hazardous materials. Item three includes the budget ratifications I talked about on attachment one and the different funds. Item four, which is a long document, 80 pages, that includes appropriation actions in all of our city funds, highlighted here, A through, I believe it's I? A through R are items I talked about, A through T, items I talked about earlier in the presentation. I won't read them verbatim, they're in this document and the report and the agenda. And then, I'll get to five, I talked about just the two positions in the HR department. No financial appropriation needed, but the authorization of positions to say advance some of the safety programs that were identified. And so with that, that concludes my presentation. Appreciate the opportunity to talk about the budget again, a strong fiscal year and with some caution as we look ahead, so some of the much-needed dollars in our reserves as we tackle the ongoing budget problem. But appreciate your support and the time.
Thank you, Ken. That's excellent report, good news. And thank you for all the hard work in the finance department and everywhere to put this together. This was not easy document to put together and then summarize it in a city council report. So, well done. All right, questions? Councilmember Jane.
Well, first off, thank you. This is very good news, that we basically have $26.28 million of excess revenues that we can spend on things and that we're building up the budget stabilization reserve. I know we're at $70 million, but I know before we were at $80 million. What is the target when we're trying to get to 25%? Then I had some other questions. We included in here 7.6, I believe, million, 7.32 million in performance rent, which is, we call it performance rent, but it's settlement funds. So I'm confused about whether they're settlement funds or performance rent. And, you know, this is from this table in the staff report. It starts out with table number four, recommended general fund budget actions. So I'm confused about what you mean by stadium settlement funds slash budget stabilization reserve, and then in parentheses, performance rent for FY 2022, '23 and FY 23, '24. I know we were holding off on accepting performance rent through the settlement because the lenders hadn't approved it. Have they approved the full $20 million? And then, will a balance of, say, $13 million come to the general fund next year? Because it was supposed to be $20 million over two years. And then, if you go to slide eight... Okay, so here, I don't see the business license tax. And I know we had an issue where we weren't receiving business license tax revenues as early as expected, and I'm wondering if that should be a negative in there, because we had estimated $6 million, but we were getting less. I don't really understand where BLT comes in there. And then, if you go to slide nine, we say sales tax is, you know, basically flat from 2019, and you said it was because of internet. But I know when I buy things on Amazon, there's sales tax. And doesn't that sales tax come to the city? So that was my question. And then, on slide 12, you have the Commerce Plaza. And I didn't quite understand that, because you have the, like, we're carrying over $1 million, but then we're spending $430,000. But when I read the staff report, it says, on page four, it says, 2.6 million in savings in fiscal year 2324 was assumed and carried over to fiscal year 2425 for the following: Commerce Plaza maintenance and repair costs, $1.5 million. So I guess, are you saying that? I don't understand how we're getting 1.5 from this. And is that, my issue is, I toured the Commerce Plaza, and the air conditioning is absolutely terrible. I don't even know why the tenants put up with it. So I guess my question is, are we going to fix the air conditioning with this money? What is the plan there? And then, the last thing, I had a question from the staff report. It was, and I'm going to quote from this report, "The fire department overspent its appropriation by $191,000 due to higher-than-anticipated personnel costs. Fire department field operations absences were up 24% through June when compared to the prior fiscal year, from 68,023 hours to 84,744 hours. Through June, compensatory payouts were also up 22% from the prior year and significantly above historical levels." So I wanted to understand that.
Councilmember Chau.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Director Ken, for the detailed report and showing progress in almost every field. Yeah, that's good. And I appreciate your budgeting part of it, because you are very close to what you budgeted and what we are getting. In a positive sense, we have some more positive revenue growth, so that's good, and reduction in our expenses. Both sides are good, thank you. Question, I think Councilmember Jane asked the business license tax. I couldn't find that. I saw there was a line item licenses and permits, but I need to find out where are we on that business license tax? What's the revenue we are getting? We had a forecast of around $6 million, so I need to have more details on that, how much is it? I'm surprised, like, about sale tax, actual has gone down from '22, '23, and '24, '23, '24. Like, do we know what are the reasons for that, why it went down, basically? So that's the question. I also noted on slide number 14, finance, FH-RMS project, accounting software upgrade, purchasing contracts. I know I've been asking for upgrading our PeopleSoft plugin, other packages, so I'm not sure where we stand on that, but if we are only adding $1 million to whatever our budget is, are we upkeeping with the technology on that front? Can we increase that budget so that we are more technology savvy and have more efficient systems from that perspective, basically? On enterprise fund, like water operations and maintenance, that's one flag, because our goal is to maintain 90 days reserve. We have 47, which is almost 50% versus others, are we pretty good, some of those? But what steps are we taking to fulfill that? We are closer to 90 days reserve on enterprise fund and water, basically. TOT, I'm glad we are back to pre-COVID on TOT. If you know that, that's fine. Do you know, if apples to apples, if we don't take into account the TOT increases we did recently, where we are comparing? And I don't expect that answer right now, because maybe needing some calculus. And I don't expect that answer right now because maybe needing some calculations. But I would like to see where, apples to apples, where we are not adding the increases on that, basically. And I would commend that great news on enterprise funds, almost all of them accepting one. I, basically. Those are my questions and brief comments right now.
Thank you, Councilmember Hardy.
I will say, Councilmember Jane got most of the questions I had. The settlement performance rent was probably the most confusing there. I also, I guess it's more of a pet peeve for myself. I'm a little concerned when we use initials that we all understand, but we're hoping that the, our residents, of course, there's so many of them here right now that care. But when we say BLT, we mean the business license tax, not bacon, lettuce, and tomato. And TOT is the transient occupancy tax, which is what we charge to our hotels. I think it's important that our residents are clear on what it is we're talking about, and we don't just talk in alphabet soup. Thank you.
Councilmember Park.
So thank you very much for the report. I think some of these questions are exactly for the, for explanation to the audience. When you state goals in days of operation and maintenance, et cetera, it would seem that those funds would have to continually increase to make up for inflation and rising costs and things like that. How is that growth tracked? Meaning that we can't just keep our funds the same. Because even if our funds grow and we put them into things that have interest, they wouldn't likely grow as quickly as it would to maintain and operate the city. So just where is that tracked? I have another question, but I think that question has been asked already. Thank you.
That's it for the questions, Ken.
Thank you for all the questions. And so I'll kind of go through, and if I missed something, please, please do. So Councilmember Jane asked about just notation on the budget stabilization reserve. We're at 70 million. That's roughly 24%. And it also gets to Councilmember Park's question as well. So as our budget grows, that requirement for 25% will continue to grow as well. We were, I think it was five years ago, at $80 million in the budget stabilization reserve. And those dollars of the budget size, that was roughly 28%. To hit 25% of the current budget roughly is about $74 million or so. We will, we continue as we bring budgets forward, both in our reserves for our utilities and our enterprises and in the general fund, we'll continue to need to make deposits into that reserve in order to keep pace with the growth of our budget. And so same with the 90 days of operations, you know, in order to keep 90 days of operations, as the cost of your operations grow, we will continue to need to make investments in all our reserves, not just our general fund, in order to keep pace with our council policies.
Yeah.
And I think City Manager wants to comment on that.
And just to piggyback on the amount of the reserve, I think it's best to recall what happened in Santa Clara during the pandemic, right? We started with roughly an $80 million reserve. And then in order to preserve services or jobs, quickly used 40 million of that. And while that was a deep recession, it was also a recession where we received significant money from the federal government, right? Really, the first time since the New Deal that the federal government provided direct assistance to local governments. So should we, if we did not have that direct federal money, we likely would have came really close to depleting that entire $80 million, right? Or been very close to it. And so we are back up to 70, but we really do need to get to a minimum of 25%. And as the Finance Director mentioned, we had approximately 28% at the start of the pandemic.
There was a question, at least multiple questions, on what was in the report as performance rent, settlement funds, and clarification of what that is. And so, as you may recall, when the settlement agreement came forward, there was a slide that I had shown that there was $20 million that will be going to the general fund. Some of that was in the budget, the ground rent, some of the, at least the base rate of our youth fees. But there was a set aside, both in the stadium's budget of what we had called a litigation reserve until that agreement or until there was resolution of what some of that picture would look like. And so on the, in the stadium budget as part of the settlement, there were stadium budget actions that appropriated and liquidated a lot of those reserves. We were waiting, and we have been waiting for approval of that settlement agreement from our lenders. We've received verbal offer, at least, or verbal confirmation. I know City Attorney's shaking his head. I don't know if you've gotten the written, but I'll let you speak on that.
Yeah, final paper we're expanding. We're expecting to get it this week. So we, but we do have confirmation that lenders have approved the settlement.
So given at least that verbal, what this action is, is recognizing that the money that we have on the stadium authority side, in stadium authority's possession, once I'm given a green light from the City Attorney, we're going to make that transfer to the general fund. That was not in the budget. That was approved on July 1, because we, you know, when the budget was adopted and developed, that was in April, and we didn't know what the outcome would be. And so this is recognizing that money, putting it into the budget stabilization reserve, knowing that at least the dollars we have in possession on the stadium authority, once that green light's given to finance, we'll transfer that to the general fund. And those dollars were set aside from performance rent from a couple of years ago. And so when, when, through the discussion of public safety costs and thresholds and what that liability would be, the stadium authorities' position at the time was to set those aside in that litigation reserve until what the outcome of that, those issues were known. And so because of almost close to final resolution of that, those dollars in stadium authorities' possession would be transferred over. With regards to additional monies beyond the $7 million, that's for current year performance, so '23, '24. We haven't closed out that year on the stadium authority side. Anticipate if we continue to have performance rent, we will see performance rent in our budget, both on a one-time basis as we see that this year. And then as from a planning perspective, you know, as we forecast either performance rent or excess revenue, to the extent that we can validate some of those numbers, we'll include that in our planning as part of our general fund budget balancing items. So it's a portion of the 20, still more dollars to go. Slide eight, business license tax, BLT. So there were a couple of questions. So this is actually reported out on page four of the reports under the category, other taxes. You know, in, in our monthly financial reports that we bring before the board every month or so, business tax last year was underperforming. It took some time. It took two to three months to transition from the old methodology to a new methodology. By the end of the year, we collected about $5 million out of an estimate of six. So close, but not quite there. So in that, I think on the slide of the revenues, it's lumped into the other revenue variances because there were some ups and downs. We, looking at at least a glimpse of this year, we've done better. We have affirmed that through council's approval, we have on contract to audit some of those business licenses as businesses report employee counts, and they validate that information. We anticipate that number will grow and meet our estimates, our annual estimates that we had forecasted. But that first year, because of the implementation time and some of the reporting nuances, I think will take time. But as that audit proceeds, that will improve. There was a question or clarification asked about internet sales tax. We do get internet sales tax to our city. That flows through the county based on how a point-of-sale sales tax is reported. So in the past, if an item was purchased in the city of Santa Clara, we got the full 1% out of the 9%. Anything over the internet, it's a percentage. While the growth of the internet has happened, it's a smaller percentage just because of how internet sales tax flows through all the jurisdictions. And then, so as you see as a trend from a sales tax perspective, we have grown. It is close to flat just because some of the ups and downs with regards to internet sales tax and that formula and as to what's a point-of-sale and what's, you know, distributed through the internet. And then as well as the pandemic, that had a hit on some of the activities on businesses. And so you'll see some of the drops, and it took some time to recover back to where we were pre-pandemic. There's a question on Commerce Plaza. And Councilmember Jane, you quoted correctly that in the July 1 budget, we carried over $1.5 million that were allocated for improvements such as the air condition and some of the leaks in the building. We had, you know, through the procurement process, as that project's managed through the City Manager's office, we anticipate that spend would happen after July 1, so we carried a million and a half over. Those contracts actually were entered before July 1, so they were spent last year. And so this million-dollar negative is actually returning or truing up that allocation. Because those expenses happened last year, what we carried over needs to be reduced, so you don't double-spend that money. And so it's a technical capital reconciliation. The set aside of roughly $400,000, what we're doing, we acknowledge there is a significant capital need for that facility. So what we've done, at least on a budgetary basis, any rent collected, we've allocated to that project so that it would be used for maintenance. Now, that $400,000 is not enough to upgrade everything in that building. We'll continue to address the most critical needs. And I think City Manager wants to chime in just on the planning efforts with regards to the improvements in that building.
Sure. Two properties there, 900 Lafayette and 1,000 Lafayette. 900 Lafayette is the taller building. Significant deficiencies in that building. I think the council will remember that we acquired that building back from private ownership after a 55-year ground lease. And we acquired it back with significant deferred maintenance and just over, I think, 23 tenants. We've done some analysis. The total estimated cost to bring that facility into better condition is approximately $28 million. It's really not cost-efficient. And we've talked to council about this on a number of occasions. And so with regard to 900 Lafayette, we're currently working through a process with the tenants and planned on ending full tenancy of that property in May of 2025. And so we're working through that process. That's not the smaller mall that has a number of businesses in it. And so we're working through that process, and we'll be talking with the council about a longer-term plan for that property. And so what we're doing with that $400,000 is we know that there will be some holding costs as we continue to work with that, with that property. And so we want to reserve those and not just have that money go into the general fund. In addition, the annual rent on that property right now is only $1.6 million. We have made a number of critical life safety improvements. I think the council will remember that there were some elevator upgrades. There were some water intrusion. There was issues with the HVAC system not working. We have temporary HVAC systems in there. But we've met with all the tenants and our property manager. And, you know, unfortunately, the situation is we inherited a building with significant deferred maintenance, and the cost to bring it up to a appropriate condition is just not beneficial. And also, council knows the current configuration doesn't fit with the vision you established with the downtown Precise Plan.
And then there was a question on fire department budget exceeded the budget by roughly 191,000. We reported through our monthly financial report some of the challenges with fire department overtime in a lot of different cities. Just a little background on the operations, there's a daily staffing level that's required to staff the apparatus to keep our city safe. So whenever there are personnel that are absent, that could be absent because of a vacancy, absent because of a disability, absent because of a doctor's appointment, whatever that case may be, there's a callback for overtime to staff those positions. And so some of the trends, because of various reasons, and we've reported out on absence hours, that trend has gone up, and that we've worked very closely with our fire chief on what's happening on the ground there to staff the fire department. And so absence hours are up. And so as a trend from a budget standpoint, when we set the budget, it assumes some level of absences. And to the extent we're higher than that absence level, we need to backfill with additional overtime. That's not in the budget. So we augmented the fire department budget back in May, knowing that that was an issue that we were facing operationally. We were estimating at the time, and we underestimated by roughly $200,000. And so when we ended the year, there's a need for about $200,000 just to fill that bucket. That trend, I will say, as we look ahead, we are working with the fire department just on ways to minimize that number. It's a difficult number to predict at times because, you know, people could be out for various different reasons. And so it's something we're tracking. We've had meetings with our fire chief, with our city manager on options, and we'll continue to report out through our monthly financial report on those trends. Councilmember Chahal had a question on PeopleSoft, and so I wanted to kind of touch on a system that is near and dear to the finance department and many other departments. And when we walked in and took a look at what our business processes are and where we could be with our technology, there's a lot of areas that we could improve with PeopleSoft. I think that's been before the board, and we've reported out. We have a qualified list of eight vendors to help us through that. And so there's some coordination needed. We're in process, and we've gone live with capital assets, accounts receivable, upgrades. We're in process with our benefit module and lifting that. So open enrollment will look different for this organization in a year. We're working on our payroll system and automating some of our manual processes, and that work is not yet done. It's in progress. You'll see before you a task order and a contract for our PeopleSoft upgrade. Every so year, every couple of years, PeopleSoft, Oracle, will stop supporting certain versions and force you onto newer versions. And so there's a cost to go on to newer versions. And then when we looked at our contracts and our procurement, there were improvements and efficiencies that we can use with technology that we have today. And so we brought in a consultant to look at our business process, look at our gaps. And so we've identified, it's a multi-phase project, but at least the most critical areas will require some funding. So this $1 million is a down payment for what we think we will need for the upgrade for that contract management. There will be other needs as we keep going. But it's like moving, improving the car as it's drive, as you drive it, right? So we have to pay people, and we have to have improvements to the system. We have a contracts process and a procurement process that's live and underway, and we have to upgrade that module. And so it will take time and resources and dollars. But we have identified a lot of different needs and work very closely with our IT department to get those across the goal. With regards to our enterprise fund, you know, we do have some funds where we're not meeting our goals. And so it would be, you know, when we adopted those policies four or five years ago, you know, looking at where we needed policies to meet best practices, we understood it would take time to fill those buckets, right? It would be a large rate increase to go from a small reserve to meet all of a sudden a 90-day reserve. And so we've made a lot of progress, as I've shown on those two slides. Water is an area, when the drought occurred, there was conservation. And so that impacted revenues, and it helped us on the cost side. We haven't been able to quite get there to our goal. And so we work with our rate consultants to build in incrementally over time, little pieces to build up our reserves. But it will take time to build up all our reserves. But we've made significant process. TOT, I'll have to get back on very specific data. I know that from a dollar perspective, we're there. We increased it roughly 30% on the rate. So I know that, you know, we had occupancy rates in the mid 80s on average across all the hotels pre-COVID. We had average daily rates of the high 300s. I think when the last report I saw, we were probably in the 60s to 70% occupancy rate with rates closer to like 200, 250. So we're not there yet in terms of activity, both on an occupancy level and on a daily rate level. But at least with the rate increase, we've gotten back to close to that actual dollar level. So some ways to go there. But that'll be a challenge with regards to how business and corporate travel has changed with the remote. with the remote video conferencing. That will take some time. And then Councilmember Hardy, appreciate the comment on the initials. So firms, I know it's our PeopleSoft system, business license text, and transient occupancy tax. Councilmember Park, I think I addressed it. I just would add that we understand that as we have goals for our reserves, those change with every budget. As the cost of an operations grows, our contributions to those reserves will be needed. At the end of the year, we do a snapshot, and we say, where are we at with the goals? When we present our July 1 budget, we do a snapshot of where we at with our goals. And our goal, working with departments, our rates, is to balance out, how do we meet those goals? And sometimes it's on the revenue side with rates, sometimes it's on the expense side with the cost. But our goal really is to ensure that all our enterprises have sufficient reserves and meet best practices for that rainy day fund. So I think that was all the questions, but if I missed something, please let me know.
All right, I'm gonna go, oh, I was gonna go the public, but Councilmember Jane.
Thank you, Ken, for all those explanations. I'm still confused about the settlement. The statement was that we're expecting about $20 million over the next two years. I see 7.3 million of that here. Now, we have typically been making about $5 to $6 million a year from concerts and ticketed events, and then an additional, say, $2, $3 million on non-ticketed events from the stadium. So generally ends up being about $7 or $8 million of non-NFL net revenue to the city. Is that included? So the problem is all the timing, and, you know, so what you're doing is, you're doing a budget amendment because we couldn't book the 7.3 million in the last year. So we're amending last year's budget to account for that money, I guess. I'm confused about that. We're amending this year's budget. Really confused. But in any case, but now we're gonna have, before the end of this fiscal year, '25, we're gonna have more non-NFL revenue, right? Is that included in the 13 million that we expect? Or is the 13 million from litigation fund that we're now dispersing?
Sure. Ken, before you jump in, I want to clarify, Councilmember Jane, a number of the figures that you cited, which the Finance Director may be able to ballpark, verify, are actually Stadium Authority, not city. And so when you talked about $8 million of non-NFL revenue to the city, it's actually to the Stadium Authority?
Oh, yeah.
Right? And so I think the gist of your question is Stadium Authority revenue that comes to the general fund on an annual basis, and how that relates to the funds that are being recognized as a part of this year in close for the '23-'24 budget, knowing that part of that is regular Stadium Authority revenue, as well as part of it is the settlement funds, that is performance rent from back years. And so with that, I'll turn it over to the Finance Director. But I want to make sure that we concentrate on the item which deals with '23-'24.
And so maybe I'll take it at a different angle, just because there's a lot of numbers being thrown out here. And so I'll start with timing of the budget. So we are in the '24 fiscal year. We've closed out '23-'24. When the council approved the '24 budget, the July 1 '24 budget, it did not have any stadium revenues from performance rents, excess revenue, because we were in a position when we developed that budget of unknowns with regards to some of the issues that were resolved in May, I believe, of this year. And so because there's more clarity on what that settlement agreement was, and it's approved, the Stadium Authority is in possession of roughly $7.3 million from prior year performance rent. Part of that agreement allows for the release of that to the general fund. And so this action before you is to amend this year's budget, the July 1 '24 budget, for the dollars that we have in possession, seeing the likelihood of that approval. There may be more dollars that come to the general fund. In fact, that $20 million contemplates that. We won't know the exact number until we close out the Stadium Authority fiscal year, and we flow through all the different credits that would happen, and then we're gonna know. And so possibly, this fiscal year, there may be more money coming. A lot of that will depend on timing, because the Stadium Authority fiscal year closes March 30. It takes some time to close the books, and we might not even have those numbers or possession of that cash this fiscal year. And so likely, that will bleed into next fiscal year. As part of our budget planning, we are gonna look at performance rent and potentially excess revenue as an ongoing stream of revenue. But as far as the actions today, these are dollars that were not in the city budget as of July 1, based on the settlement agreement. We're recommending to transfer over the dollars, at least in our possession on the Stadium Authority side, to the budget stabilization reserve.
All right, so now's the time for the public. If we have any public members, I know we have a lot of, we have 12 people attending. I don't see any hands. Are there any hands? Okay, no, so may I have a motion, council?
Yeah, sure, I'll make the motion.
Okay, go ahead, Anthony.
Sorry, it's on. Okay, I'll make a motion to take staff's recommendations of 1, 2, 3, and 4. And do I have to get into the details?
Through 100.
4, sorry, 4. It skipped 5.
5, there's a 5.
And that's it?
All staff recommendation.
All staff recommendation.
Is there a second? And we have a second. All right, motion and a second. Councilmember Park, do you have a comment?
Yeah, so thank you very much for the answers. I heard what you said about continuing to need to make deposits to the reserves to keep up with the rising costs. But my question was, how is that growth tracked? Meaning, we can always add money to, you know, to the funds, and we can always say, well, this is the money that we needed, or this is how much we needed. But how do we track? Is there any way that we track the growth so we know how that changes from time to time? Otherwise, we're just adding money in. There's no way to look at, you know, what a reasonable change might be. Right? Do you understand? It's not like, I understand the concept of we have to increase those funds, but the question is, do we track how those funds increase based on?
So Councilmember, yes, Councilmember Park. So we do a couple things. One is, from a go-forward basis, from a projection basis, you know, when we work with our rate consultant, we look over a 10-year horizon. What is our growth in both expenses? What's the revenue needed to generate to meet those expenses and meet sufficient reserves? And so in all our utilities, when we work with our rate consultants, we look on a 10-year basis going forward. When those actual numbers come through, both during the year, you know, if there's any variance from a lot of those projections, we report those out in our monthly financial report. At the end of the year, when we have actual dollars, as I've shown in my report, we report out, hey, where are we at against our goals? And then when we plan the budget again, we track that. And so there isn't an ongoing daily tracking, but when we do check-ins on the budget, both from a forward-looking as well as an actual perspective, we're always looking at, how are we doing against our policies, our reserve levels? And then we make recommendations for funding. Just, for example, in the general fund, our recommendation to sock away or build up our budget stabilization reserve close to the 25%, that was based on our council policies and based on the actual performance from the prior year. So I hope that answers your question, if I haven't.
So, and I understand that as well. I mean, basically, you're saying that you work with the rate consultants to come up with where you think you need to be. You try to make sure that the differences are within council policies, within city policies, so we can build it up. But we wouldn't actually know if something is amiss until there is, something is amiss, right? I guess the other thing that I'm looking at is, how do we know the rate at which this change is happening, right? How do we know that we are getting close, we're not getting close? Like, the only way that we know at this point is that you tell us, right? Based on, you know, what those actual numbers, as they come in throughout the year. Like, if they exceed some limit, or if they exceed some threshold, then you will raise that as an issue. But if we wanted to track how this, you know, like, is this growing faster than cost of living? Is this going faster than, you know, is there one sector that's, you know, has a greater need than other sectors? How would we look at something like that?
So if I may, I think there are two, two things come to mind. One is, you know, how do we know if something is amiss or off from our projections? We work with our departments. We have a very experienced budget team that looks on a line item, by a line-item basis, appropriations, projects. If something's off, we're gonna report it out in our.
So the difference is, how would we know that the numbers are off compared to something else, like an external index like cost of living increases or things like that? How would we know if that's off? That's why I want to know, have we tracked it? Like, I understand that we would know if our targets are off, if the monies that we're raising are off compared to the targets that we've set. But how would we compare that to, you know, how the money should grow compared to what the economy's doing, or something else like that? They don't seem to be, there doesn't seem to be any way to tie that back to the actual costs.
Sure. Councilmember Park, let me try to address that. I'm gonna say it slightly differently. What I'm hearing you say is, how do we track essentially that our budget is growing at a rate that is appropriate? And you're using an example of a inflation cost or other cost indexes that are out there. Good question. I think if we step on the balcony, the largest way that our budget grows is our personnel cost. The vast majority of our budget is personnel, right? And so we know how our budget in large measure is going to grow based on the approved memorandum of understanding with our represented groups. Oftentimes, we have multi-year contracts, there's collective bargaining process, and council approves those, right? And so we have that projection at a high level of how our costs are gonna increase. Do our costs increase sometimes more than cost of living? Absolutely. And sometimes our wage increases are more than cost of living. I think to compare a municipal budget to an outside index, for example, construction cost index or cost of living index, may not be the right comparison. We may want to right-size that and compare it to other municipal budgetary increases of either our neighbors or other peer groups, so we have more of an apples-to-apples comparison because we have a different cost structure, a different sort of business model than other indices. And so is that analysis done on a regular basis? No. When we really do our budget, we do our budget based on our known cost structure, largely MOUs, but then also our commodity costs and our contract costs. One of the things that the Finance Director alluded to, that we are preparing to launch in 2025 to address our structural deficit, is a structural deficit elimination project. And so as a part of that project, we will undertake a detailed analysis of the city's budget and our challenges. We can certainly include within that project some comparisons and benchmarks and find the right indices. And again, I think comparing to other municipal organizations, potentially even special districts, even though they have a slightly different business model, but they're in the same, right, municipal services industry would be a better relative comparison.
Understood. And I think that what I'm asking would tell you how much of the cost is personnel versus materials versus what have you, right? I think that that's part of my question. And then as we go on and we use tools, for example, maybe there's personnel that's used for, you know, used for, you know, tracking, used for scheduling, used for things like that. And then those costs would go down if we got this tool or we got something else. I mean, I'm saying, how do we know? Otherwise, the numbers are just going up, and, you know, it's hard for us to justify that. All we're hearing is, well, based on what our consultant tells us, this is how we, we're gonna set our rates to hit this target. And then the question is, what sets those targets?
I think what you heard from the Finance Director, in particular, when he was talking about use of our consultants, is that we have consultants for property tax and sales tax, for example. And our sales tax consultant works for cities across the state, and they do a detailed analysis of trends, both statewide and national trends, to help us project where our sales tax will be. Because there are metrics that can be, that are replicated across the state that will help us have an indication. A sales tax in Santa Clara is gonna increase at a 2% clip, a 3% clip, or a 4% clip. And the general economic trends of our region and the state help us with that. And so that's why we utilize consultants, because we're not an island, right? The same thing for property tax. We utilize a consultant, but that consultant actually does very, very detailed analysis on property transactions in Santa Clara, both commercial, residential, industrial. And so that's why we use those consultants, because they specialize in helping cities project out their revenues. And so when the Finance Director was talking about, we rely on our consultants. It's because it's a common, and in fact, a best practice to rely on consultants to help project those revenues, because the trends are more or less similar in our region and sometimes across the state.
Yes, and what you said earlier was that the most of our costs are based on personnel, on personnel costs. And if that's the case, like, it'd be interesting to know what the breakdown, what the breakdown is, because now personnel costs have a lot more than to our budget, have a lot more impact on our budget than just salaries. You know, now they're affecting operations and maintenance, now they're affecting the funds that we need to reserve, now that they're, now they're affecting a lot of different things. So again, you know, I will drop this line of questioning, but I think you understand what my question is, which is, how do we tie this to other costs? How do we predict? How do we verify? How do we validate? How do we vet that the increase is, you know? And how do we look back and see where those increases are coming from?
Councilmember Chahal.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to make a brief comment. First of all, thanks to Ken and your whole of your team for bringing this forward and bringing the budget. And on top of that, I would commend leadership of City Manager, who has in-depth knowledge about budget, and his background is helping us out in finalizing all this stuff. Like, we were in deficit, and now with new hires, like 32 new hires. I know last year, we had more savings from not fulfilling the budgeted portion, but this year, we are a different scenario, like 32 new hires, 20 promotions, and still, we have a savings on the budget, basically. And on top of that, I'm glad that more money is flowing from the stadium after the settlements, and that's a good thing for the city and the general fund. Finally, we are getting those money into the budget. One thing I noted, the interest earnings this year has been very great, like almost 96% more than what we projected. I'm not sure how the scenario would be next year, but that has been a good revenue source for us, basically, and like, almost same as the property tax, if I take into account the variance was $3-plus million, so that's good. But at the same time, I would like, as I emphasized earlier on several occasions, I know this is a forum only for budget, but I would still put a priority that our technology budget implementation of different modules, that needs a top priority, and we need to make sure, because that will add efficiency to our system, and down the line, it will can be a good source of savings for our budget, basically. So those are my comments, and with that, I would say, I'm already second in the motion. I'll support the motion.
So City Clerk, we have a motion and a second on the floor, when you're ready. Please register your vote. And that passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Thank you, Ken, staff, everyone, for that excellent presentation. All right, next, that was three pages of. Next, there's three pages of recommendations in the, in the agenda. Next, we have item number six, action on approval of cost of living salary adjustment for city attorney, approval of amendment number one to employment agreement, and with city attorney Glenn Gugan's adoption of a resolution updating the unclassified salary plan for position of city attorney. So we have a recommendation for a 3.25% increase in salary retroactive to March 1st, 2024. Result, do I have to read this? Resulting in the new annual salary of $356,212.50 to take effect December 22nd, and a retroactive payment of $9,099.38.
Madam Mayor, if I might, because this item relates to my compensation, I just wanted to note for the record, yeah, that I was not involved in the preparation of this item. It would also not be appropriate for me to remain present to advise you in my place. Chief Assistant City Attorney Sue Ruder is available remotely to advise you if necessary and as she sees fit. And with that, I will take my leave and return for item number seven. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
This might be quick, so don't go far. Is there a motion from the council?
That'll be it.
Is that a motion to approve?
A second.
Yes, a motion to approve.
All right. And we have a second. Councilmember Park.
So, this one was actually really difficult for me to, to parse. I mean, one of the things that, I don't know how much I can disclose, but when we've traditionally given, like, we don't have a great process for doing reviews, we don't seem to have a very good process for promotions or, or increases. I, we asked about, again, somebody stop me if we can't talk about this, but.
I would say any, any conversations that were had in closed session, you should not talk about. Feel free to make any other comments that you would like.
Okay. I guess my question is, what, what happens if some of these are discernible by looking at our processes and?
Sure. I think you.
Say that again? Yeah, I didn't understand what you said. Can you repeat, please?
Like, I mean, if, if we say that something exists or does not exist, and that can be determined by looking at our council policies or looking at, you know, is that something that I can state or not state?
Sue?
If, if you're, the comment that you want to make is something that's based on an existing public, publicly known policy and is not reflective of discussion taking place solely in closed session, yes, you can say that.
Okay. Then, I'm going to say it this way, which was, I would like a little bit more thought put into the process before we make a vote on, on, on action. That's, I guess, that's what I'm going to say. That's my gist.
Councilmember Jane.
Yes, I have a number of questions. Does the city attorney's contract suggest annual reviews? And then, second, I guess, apparently there was no annual review at his one-year anniversary. So I guess my question is, if there's no annual review, it doesn't seem fair to me that because apparently the council, which is responsible for the annual review, didn't do its job, that an employee should not get cost of living increases? And then, I guess my second question was that we have a unit nine in the city, which is basically management employees except other than city attorney and city manager. What kind of compensation do they get? Those are my questions.
Councilmember Chahal.
I don't have a question, but, you know, it's council responsibility as per the contract, city attorney's employment contract that we need to review within a one year. And I see that we had postponed that review multiple times, like, it was agenda, put on agenda on 2/27/24, then again, 11/12/24, then again, 11/19/24. So just like any other employee in unit nine or any other employee of the city, we don't want to, if we didn't do our job of, or due to one reason or the other, ideally, I would like that we give this type of raise on annual review. But if we are not doing that, that doesn't mean the employee doesn't deserve that, or it's none of his fault. So for that matter, we took that, I'm ready to support the motion. Thank you.
Councilmember Watanabe.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm looking at the contract and section 3.2 under adjustments. And, and it talks about, following the completion of the annual performance appraisal, the council shall meet with the employee for the express purpose of determining any appropriate salary adjustment. And in determining any appropriate salary adjustment, the city council shall take no, shall take into account any cost of living adjustments, but the ultimate decision regarding the timing and the amount of any adjustment, including but not limited to cost of living, is within the sole discretion of the city council. Now, I don't know why there was, why, and why a review hasn't taken place or a performance appraisal. It was scheduled. I know there was discussion about getting somebody to do a proper performance evaluation and to work with council, but it, it didn't happen. And so, but based on the contract, I mean, it specifically says that no adjustments can occur until an evaluation takes place. So, and I know there was discussion about having, of that as well. I think it's, this is not the appropriate time to make an adjustment, especially if we're considering an, an evaluation. I think it should be all done together. So I will not be supporting a motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Park.
Yeah. And I think that's my, my concern. My concern is that, I mean, whether there's a process in place or not, it clearly didn't happen. And my thinking is not that, you know, we not give people what they're due, but even in the motion, it says, approved cost of living salary adjustment retroactive, resulting in a new annual salary to take effect, and a retroactive payment. And I think it takes into account retroactivity. And I thought about this for a long time, and I feel that it is kind of true, which is, I don't think that cost of living or these kinds of increases, especially for, you know, executive staff, should be a, an expectation every year. I mean, I could see that leading to lots of different things that, you know, built into contracts, but not built into this contract. And as a result, I'm, I'm having trouble, trouble supporting this, this motion. Let me see where I am in, in about a minute.
Vice Mayor Becker.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So I know that there were several times throughout the time we were here on city council that there was, sent a lot of polling out consistently about having meetings for this. I know that there was times I would see consistently that, oh, canceled, canceled, nope, can't get a quorum. So I don't know who wasn't available in all those years in that time period, but I know I surely try to make myself available to have that. And so when it comes to, I guess, because since Sue's there, I appreciate you being here for asking this question. Based on Councilmember Watanabe, what she said on item three, compensation while performing the duties of city attorney, that is, I'm kind of glad she actually asked that, because I kind of had that concern too, but I figured something would have been brought to our attention if we were violating this contract or we were violating a policy. So I wanted to get some confirmation a little further, and I appreciate that Councilmember Watanabe brought that up, to understand a little more in that aspect of section three about compensation, and if we are following the rules to the T.
Sue, did you want to answer that? Or are you, can you answer that?
Yeah. We have, looks like we have about three questions. I can answer two of them, and I'll defer the third to the city manager. So the first question from Councilmember Jane was, does the contract contain an annual review process requirement? And the answer is yes, it does. And you all have mentioned on several occasions that that review process did not take place, at least as it's set forth in the contract. The unit nine question, the MOU, I'll defer that to the, to the city manager. And the third question was regarding whether or not the contract can be interpreted to allow for this decision to be made. And I would say the answer to that is yes, it can. It's the language in the last sentence of 3.2 that says, "The ultimate decision regarding the timing and the amount of any adjustment, including but not limited to cost of living, is within the sole discretion of the city council." That, that language applies to the remainder of section 3.2. So it certainly can be interpreted to allow the council to have discretion to provide adjustments in a timing that is within your sole discretion, including at, at some point within the review or appraisal process. And you are within that review or appraisal process now. The amendment that is attached to the RTC packet contains some amended language to clarify this exact issue, so, so that it doesn't become a question in the future. But even without that contract amendment, I, I think that any action that you take here is appropriate, given the, the sole discretion language in section 3.2.
Thank, thank you, Sue. I really appreciate that, because I, when Councilmember Watanabe was reading the bottom part there, I mean, it kind of sounded like we got our answer in the, including but not limited to the cost of living is within the sole discretion of the city council. And I just appreciate that you were able to confirm that, because that was kind of my concern. And again, I'm glad Councilmember Watanabe asked that question, so we can get that clarification.
Timing and that. I just want to say, because I looked at this contract, and it where it says adjustments, and, and Sue, you just said that the amount or the timing of the compensation is at the sole discretion of the city council, but the first part of the sentence says, "Following the completion of an annual performance appraisal," which we haven't done. Now, we hired, because this is all public knowledge, it was on the agenda, we hired a performance evaluator for both the city attorney and city manager. And the, part of the issue was the performance evaluator was not available to help us. And the city attorney, you know, requested that, that this happened very soon, and our evaluator, which I didn't support by vote as well, was not available. So I am, there's no automatic, for, for these types of positions, city manager, city attorney, there's no automatic cost of living adjustments. It's a salary increase. And so I am, I'm not going to vote for a salary increase without a performance evaluation, especially one that goes retroactive, and then we'll do another one in the next month or two, and then there'll be another one. I think it's, it's not in the spirit of, of what we should be doing. If we are going to, and I'm not saying it's not warranted, an increase, but if we are going to do an increase for our appointed positions, it should be after an evaluation. And without an evaluation, I can't support it. Councilmember, oh, city manager, did you want to say something?
A question was referred to me, which was the question of what was the unit nine increase? So there were a few. The council will remember that unit nine, and I should say for those that don't know, unit nine is our management group that collectively bargains for their wage increases. And there was a, that does not include the city manager or the city attorney. There was a wage increase that unit nine was provided in January of 2024, so at the beginning of this year of 3.25%. There was recently a collective bargaining agreement for a successor contract that the council approved. And for the first year of that, 2025, there were a number of raises depending on the classification. So the most senior classifications, the chief operating officer and the assistant city managers for 2025 received zero, department heads received 3%, and all others in the unit received 5% as an answer to the question that was asked.
Councilmember Park.
Yeah. So, so I heard the answer, I've heard the answers. I've heard the mayor mention timing, and I think that that, that actually factors into my, my response, which is, without disclosing anything from closed session, I think that timing is a very important thing. Like, when we talk about the meetings that were scheduled, and those meetings that were scheduled recently, should have been scheduled a long time ago. I mean, we have quorum for a reason. If not every council member can make every meeting, then that shouldn't be a problem. And I'm saying this as a reminder to everyone, because I've been told that if I can't make a meeting, then too bad for me, the meeting's going to happen, because we have quorum. And I think that if we're going to hold that standard to council, then we need to hold that standard to all of council. That if we can have, if we have quorum and there are timely things that need to happen, then I'm sorry, we need to schedule those meetings. Right? But to say that some, some people are more important than others, or do, you know, make that kind of intimation, I, I have been told explicitly that, I'm sorry, we have quorum. You know, the fact that you can't make this meeting does not have any bearing on this meeting taking place. And I want to make sure that everyone here and everyone out in the public understands that this standard needs to be consistent and upheld, especially for things that are written into contract. And when we talk about, well, if evaluator wasn't, wasn't available, without disclosing anything that we talked about in closed session, well, there was a time when the evaluator was available. And, and during those times, we could have acted. And again, I'll repeat, without disclosing anything that happened in closed session, we have quorum for a reason. And I'd like everyone to understand that. So with this, I think my mind's made up. Thank you.
City clerk, when you're ready? There's a motion and a second to approve this raise. Please register your vote. That passes five to two. All right. City attorney can come back, wherever he is. Can somebody go get him? Thank, thank you, Sue. Appreciate it. Thank you. All right. Next and last, we have action on recommendations from the Governance and Ethics Committee to amend city council policy 049, community grant policy. City manager.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor, members of the council, and any members of the public that are still up. We don't have any in the audience. Christine Jung from the city manager's office will present on amendments to council policy 049, our community grant policy. As the council knows, the policy was established, the, the policy established the city, the city's community grant program, which provides grants to support community events and youth participation in state, national, and international championships, competitions, and performances. The proposed amendments are being presented to the council to streamline our grant program. And I will now turn the presentation over to Christine Jung.
Thank you for your patience this evening as well, both of you. We appreciate it.
Thank you. I'll be presenting on item seven tonight, which brings forth recommendations from the Governance and Ethics Committee to amend council policy 049, community grant policy. Before I begin, I do want to take a moment to recognize Laura Sincere, who's a management analyst in the city manager's office. She has been managing the community grant program for the last two years. As the council may be aware, the program does require significant. As the council may be aware, the program does require significant engagement, and she has done a great job providing the high level of customer service and support to the nonprofits and community groups that have applied for the grant and receive grant funding. So thank you, Laura. As part of tonight's item, we'll cover relevant background on the community grant policy, proposed amendments to the policy that are being considered by council tonight, and a grant contribution to the community grant program. The community grant program was adopted by city council in September 2018, which was, which created a standardized process, also known as the city's community grant program, which allows the city to provide grant funds to supporting qualifying events, activities, and competitions that provide a public benefit to the city and its residents. Through the grant program, applicants such as nonprofits, youth athletic groups, educational groups, and individuals can apply for a grant for up to $10,000 every fiscal year. There are two categories of grants, the first one being community events and activities. These are generally one-time events and activities that meet the policy's existing criteria, which requires that the event or activity provide a benefit to the Santa Clara residents, contributes positively to the recognition and image of Santa Clara, is open to the general public, aligns with council goals, is not religious or political in nature, and is held in Santa Clara. If the event is a fundraiser, the proceeds must support programs and services for Santa Clara residents. The second category of grants is designated for youth competitions and performances in which Santa Clara youth attend or participate in youth state, national, or international competitions and performances. Applicants applying for these grants must follow similar criteria as community events and activities. Additionally, those grant funds for youth competitions and performances must be used for attendance at a specific state, national, or international title or performance. The grant funds cannot exceed 20% of allowable expenses, which include registration, hotel, transportation, and food. Individuals and groups either have to be from Santa Clara schools, or have at least 50% of the students be Santa Clara residents. Lastly, there's a requirement that only one coach or chaperone is funded for every six students. The policy aligns a grant process in which applications are reviewed and approved administratively by the city manager's office. Next slide. The community grant program launched in October 2018, and has supported a variety of events and activities during the last six years. These event and activities include fun runs, social impact summits, car shows, cultural events, fundraisers, community discussions, and youth groups advancing to sports, robotics, dance, and musical competitions and championships. Next slide. About three and a half years after the community grant program was established, in May 2022, the city council approved modifications to the policy that provided additional guidance and requirements on the grant eligibility, allowable expenses, and post-event review as reflected on this slide. These modifications were incorporated into the current policy that's in, in effect today. The process of identifying further updates to the policy began in spring of 2023, with the goal of further streamlining the grant process for applicants, grant recipients, and staff, and expanding the program so that more activities could be eligible for receiving grant funding. Staff brought forward an initial set of recommendations for amendments to the Governance and Ethics Committee in July of 2024 for consideration. Those proposed amendments included restructuring the policy to separate the eligibility criteria and procedures for the two grant categories, requiring applicants to demonstrate a financial need for grant funding, enhancing eligibility requirements, expanding eligible types of events and activities, expanding eligible expenses, defining ineligible expenses, and lastly, promoting accountability and increasing protections for the city. The Governance and Ethics Committee approved staff's recommendations to the community grant policy with a few additional considerations. Staff were asked to consider term limits for suspension based on severity of the infraction, as well as organizational change by which the infraction occurred, requiring grant recipients to submit a 500-word maximum post-event description of how the event went for posting on the city's website, increasing the maximum grant amount annually to account for inflation, carrying over remaining balances of unused community grant funds to following fiscal years, and reserving a portion of funds later in the year for youth competitions and performances. The amended policy presented to council incorporates much of the committee's feedback and additional clarifying edits proposed by staff. The next couple slides cover the various amendments that are being proposed. In general, the amendments aim to enhance eligibility requirements and criteria, promote accountability, increase protections for the city, as well as expanding post-event requirements for grant, sorry, grant recipients. The first policy amendment expands eligible community events and activities to include community projects and programs. The current policy supports one-time events and activities. This amendment promotes creativity, increases community engagement and benefits to the Santa Clara community, and would allow for more events and activities to be funded through our grant program. The second amendment here on the slide requires applicants to demonstrate a financial need for grant funding. This is an area that the current policy is silent on. If this amendment is approved, the grant application will be updated to ask applicants to provide a program budget and verification documents such as nonprofit status or a letter describing the need for funding. Financial need is broadly interpreted, but it allows the city to obtain more information from applicants in the activity that's being requested for funding from grant funds. The last amendment on the slide proposes to remove this community grant application as an attachment to the policy. This would further streamline the process and the event. The document requires administrative updates in the future. Next slide. Currently, applicants are required to demonstrate how their activity aligns with council goals, which are established through a council priority setting process. The council goals may not always be directly applicable to the activities that are funded through the program. So the next amendment proposes to replace the council goals by asking applicants to demonstrate how their community event activity and youth competition and performance aligns with one of the following grant-focused areas. For Santa Clara youth, community services, Santa Clara identity, culture representation, and equity. The Santa Clara youth grant focus area captures community events, activities, and youth competition performances that positively impact Santa Clara youth. The next grant focus area of community service captures community events and activities, youth competition performances that directly improve the quality of life for Santa Clara residents. And the last focus area, grant focus area, captures community events, activities, youth competitions, and performances that celebrate and promote Santa Clara arts, history, sports, education, organizations, sorry, individuals, and other efforts that make the city of Santa Clara a great place to live, work, and visit. Next slide, okay. The current policy does not allow for grant funds to be used for religious and political purposes. Staff has proposed clearer definitions of both categories so that they are more consistent with state and federal laws. Additionally, the current policy only lists a few eligible expenses that include city permits, fees, and services, venue, food and beverage, trash and recycling, and stage and tent rentals. With the goal of further supporting community events, activities to ensure their success, there's a proposed amendment to expand the eligible expenses to include additional event-specific rental expensive, expenses, event insurance, event-related supplies for one-time use, marketing costs, and other permits, fees, services from other public agencies. The language being proposed incorporates subsequent minor edits from staff that is intended to provide more clarity after the Governance and Ethics Committee's review. The last amendment on the slide proposes to define ineligible expenses for community events and activities to include gifts, giveaway items, and programmatic expenses. The current policy is silent in this area, but ineligible expenses are consistent with the city's current practices. Next slide. The current policy is silent on prohibited uses of grant funds and does not provide guidance for, to address policy violations. However, grant recipients are provided a copy of their approved grant application and corresponding grant approval letter that clearly states requirements during the grant process. To promote accountability and increase protections for the city, staff is proposing several amendments to the policy that aim to outline clear instructions on how grant funds can be spent and what needs to be submitted to the city for auditing. Communicating that policy violations, such as the misuse of grant funds, failure to provide required documentation, or failure to follow policy terms and the approved application, and/or material changes to the approved event, may result in a grant recipient returning funds to the city in full or in part, and impact their future ability to apply for the grant program. The amendments also provide grant recipients that are ineligible to apply due to prior in compliance, the opportunity to apply again one year after, after resolution of outstanding issues. The last amendment is in response to the committee's request to include a term limit for any suspensions. One year after resolving outstanding issues is a reasonable amount of time, and helps encourage grant recipients to follow the policy and post-event requirements. The current policy provides general direction that a grant recipient is required to provide proof that grant funds were spent as approved within 30 days after an event. The proposed amendments clarify and expand post-event requirements to require grant recipients to identify any unspent grant funds, provide receipts and invoices, attendance numbers, fundraising actuals if applicable, and a community impact statement up to 500 words describing the successive event. This requirement addresses the committee's request for up to 500-word event description posted on the city's website. Next slide. The Governance and Ethics Committee provided additional feedback for staff to consider with respect to the policy and program, and, which are described in the next few slides. The committee asked staff to consider carrying over remaining balances of unused grant funds in the community grant program budget to allow, to, to the following fiscal year. The council approves these funds as part of the budget process. Approximately $196,000 has been budgeted in the fiscal year 2025 operating budget to administer through the community grant program, including $100,000 in grant funds from the 49ers Grant Commitment. The community grant program budget has not been fully expended in the past. Since fiscal year 2022, an average of $52,000 has been awarded annually in community grants, leaving on average a remainder of $38,000 in the community grant program budget per fiscal year that is then absorbed back in the city's general fund. Staff recommends bringing forward any potential carryovers of unspent community grant program funds as part of the adopted budget or budgetary year-end process for council consideration consistent with city practices. The exception to this would be the 49ers Grant Commitment funds for the community grant program, of which all must be used for such purpose, and must be distributed by the city in the corresponding fiscal year. The 49ers Grant Commitment will be discussed in later slides. The Governance and Ethics Committee also asked staff to consider increasing the maximum grant amount annually to account for inflation. The policy sets a maximum grant amount of $10,000 per applicant per fiscal year. Between fiscal year 2022 through fiscal year 2024, grant amounts have ranged from $900 to $10,000, for an average grant amount of approximately $8,700 per grant recipient. Based on the program's eligible expenses, the maximum grant amount of $10,000 has demonstrated to be a reasonable amount to cover all or most of the eligible expenses approved for grant recipients. Staff recommends revisiting this consideration in the future if, to increase the maximum grant amount to account for inflation if needed. The last, sorry, the last item the committee asked staff to consider was to reserve a portion of funds in the year, later in the year for youth competitions and performances. The policy states that applications will be evaluated on a first-come, first-served basis throughout the fiscal year. As noted in the prior slide, the community grant program budget has never been fully expended in the past, so funding youth competitions and performances that apply later in the year have, has not been an issue. Staff recommends revisiting this consideration in the future if the program budget is exhausted before youth groups have a chance to apply. The following slides briefly cover a 49ers Grant Commitment to the Community Grant Program. As part of the 10-year naming rights extension between the Stadium Authority and Levi's, the 49ers committed to providing $2,000, sorry, $200,000 annually over 200, sorry, 20 years for grants to nonprofits or community projects serving the Santa Clara community. This is referred to as the 49ers Grant Commitment. On June 4th of this year, the city council approved an initial grant funding agreement with the 49ers that directed $50,000 annually to the community grant program during the initial three years of the 20-year commitment. Per the initial grant funding agreement, city staff determines grant recipients in accordance to the city's community grant program guidelines after consultation with the 49ers or its designee. Staff has developed a consultation process with the 49ers designee. Staff reaches out to the designee to communicate the city's intention to utilize the 49ers Grant Commitment grant funds for certain grant applications that have been approved through the city's application review process, and allow the 49ers designee to, the opportunity to seek clarification or ask questions. The city retains ultimate approval authority over how the 49ers Grant Commitment funds are awarded. Staff does plan to prioritize use of these grant funds when awarding grants through the community grant program. The 49ers Grant Commitment has been incorporated into a larger initiative called 49ers Cares, which focuses on community benefits specific to Santa Clara, managed by the 49ers. The 49ers had requested the city to consider acknowledgement that a community grant is funded by 49er Cares when applicable through available channels in the normals community grant program process. Staff recommends including language in the grant approval letter acknowledging, when applicable, that the grant was funded by 49ers Grant Commitment to remain consistent with the initial grant funding agreement. Should council decide to approve the Governance and Ethics Committee's recommendation to include post-event descriptions on the city's website, staff will also indicate those that are funded by the 49ers Grant Commitment. The proposed amendments are not anticipated to impact reoccurring grant recipients, rather, the proposed amendments aim to expand eligibility to allow reoccurring applicants to continue receiving grant funds while providing the city an opportunity to support new activities that promote community service and engagement, and provide clarity on current practices. There are two alternatives presented to the council for consideration with respect to this item. Approving staff's recommendation or providing any other direction regarding the proposed amendments to the community grant policy. Staff's recommendation is to adopt, sorry, a resolution approving amendments to the Council Policy 049, Community Grant Policy, that enhance grant eligibility requirements and criteria, promotes accountability and increased protections for the city, and expand post-event requirements for grant recipients. This concludes our presentation. Staff is available to respond to any questions that the council may have.
Thank you so much for that very long presentation at this time of night. You did an excellent job. Thank you both. Councilmember Hardy?
Thank you. I guess I'm intimately aware of all the requirements, because I did this once before I was a council member, and earlier this year, I had to facilitate it, but keep my hands out of it, because I am on the council, and had to have a principal be the, be the signee, which made it very difficult. Documentation was a bit of a struggle, because both the school district and the city were asking for original documents, instead of being willing, one being willing to take a copy, and one, there's only one original document. That's the problem. So I'm wondering if that's been, if you're aware of that, especially when it becomes, when food is purchased... when food is purchased out on the road and you have one receipt, and with both the school district asking for that receipt and for the city, it is a bit of a struggle. So I wanted you to be aware of that. The 30 days became a real struggle, I know, because the school district held most of the documentation for the actual travel. And to get that required paperwork, and then the city wanted that, and this, the team was caught between two different entities. And I'm just wondering, especially with it being close to many of these things, as you mentioned, year-end, that was a bit of a struggle trying to get some of the documentation. I'm wondering if there can be some kind of a grace period when that, when you're dealing with two different government entities?
Thank you. Councilmember Jane?
Yeah, in my opinion, it's really a shame that there's money left over every year. Is there, I haven't visited the site for the grants. Is there like a dashboard saying there's, you know, $25,000 left, you know, and it will be spent, it needs to be spent by the end of the year? I mean, we're now adding a carryover, but before it was just absorbed into the general fund. So I'm just wondering if we're going to create like a portal or a dashboard where we're listing, you know, the grantees and their 500-word description of how the event went and all of that. But just to say, look, there's this money that has not been spent, go for it, you know, apply for it because, and then I was wondering, you know, we often have the CDBG grants for entities, nonprofits that serve Santa Clara that we don't have, we have more applicants than we have CDBG money. So it would be nice to be able to send letters to them, letting them know that we have this policy and that they could apply if more than 50% of their people being served are Santa Clara residents. Thank you.
Councilmember Watanabe.
Thank you, Mayor. So, thank you Christine for the presentation also. I've got several questions. Have we ever turned, have we ever turned down an organization because they didn't meet the 50% threshold, you know, having students from Santa Clara? And, and how would a group demonstrate a financial need? Because I'm thinking if they're asking for it, they must need it. What do they need to do to demonstrate that they need it? Regarding the, the 500-word essay and then posting it on the city website, I'm thinking that not everybody has access to computers. Well, and so I'm thinking of two other options, I mean, including the website, but social media. The city utilizes a lot of different platforms, but also the monthly newsletter that the city puts out to put a focus on a particular group, to maybe introduce people to an organization that they may not have known about, that maybe they want to get involved with. But it will also bring attention, number one, to the program, number two, to the particular group that utilized the grant. Okay, regarding saving monies that haven't been used and using them towards later in the year for performances or championships, why not, why would we not do that all year round? Because championships just don't occur at the end of the year. They literally occur all year round. So, so I just questioned that. And then my last one, in terms of, I don't believe I'm going to say this, the 49ers Cares issue and what they want to call the, the program, 49ers Cares. I gotta say, when the former player that was at the Parade of Champions got up on the stage with Sourdough Sam and started going on and on about 49ers Cares, there was not a lot of reaction from the community. And, and you could tell, he was trying to get the people pumped up, but they were not getting pumped up. So I'm thinking in all fairness that why not take some of those monies and allocate them to, under the names of players, you know, Kiddles Kids, you know, whatever, just as a way to attract people to the program and, and get them excited so that the money will be utilized so that it won't be left over. And those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Okay, I'm, I have a couple of questions. I want to make sure that the eligibility for the students especially is, that hasn't changed. It's still 50% residency for teams. And it's Santa Clara residents as well as students and the Santa Clara Unified School District, or we should even say Cupertino Unified School District that live in Santa Clara. Now, well, there's only one school in Santa Clara, but we just want to make sure it's the students of the Cupertino School District and this, and Campbell. We have a lot of students that live in Santa Clara but go to Campbell School District as well. Just want to make sure that it encompasses the whole city. Then you talked about the, the costs that were ineligible. I didn't see if there are anywhere like salary costs or personnel costs. Was that included in there? I didn't, was it? Okay, I didn't see it. And then the, the big issue and question I have is, how do we get them to determine their financial need? So you have a championship team full of, you know, 50 children that are high school, going to a, you know, a football championship in somewhere, which we have Wilcox High School that's going to Lincoln. It's not that far. They can drive. But let's say they're going somewhere else. How do you say, what is your financial need? Like, what would you do? You can't go to every student. There's no time. Usually, these things happen very quickly when they're eligible for championships. It happens like within a week or so. And so the, my question is, how do you even determine that? I don't think it's quite possible. So, especially in the, in the, in the, in the circumstance of championship teams. And then even following the completion of the event, especially for the championship teams and the students and the children, I wouldn't mind saying, you know, longer than 30 days, 45 days or 60 days to get all their receipts back because it's always, it's all volunteers as opposed to a nonprofit organization that's having an event that they're usually set up to do those kinds of things. When you have a championship team, it's, you know, parents that are involved and putting it together at the last minute and organizing. So, so those are my questions, comments. All right. Who hasn't spoken? Councilmember Park?
Yeah.
Questions?
So, I actually like the policy. I like the changes that were made. As someone who was on the Governance and Ethics Committee, I do appreciate the feedback that was, that was in there. And I do, I really appreciate the staff changes that you made. I think that puts a little, a little bit of clarity, makes the process easier, puts monitoring place for if we exceed an amount. And I really appreciate that. I do have some questions about receipts required for validation but not reimbursement. So if they're required for reimbursement, then we would ask for an original because you only want to reimburse once. But if they're being asked for validation, then I think that we could take a, I mean, a validation of, of how they spend the money. That, that shouldn't require an original at all. Right? I believe the, again, the original is required for reimbursement because we only reimburse, or whatever organizations are involved, would only reimburse once. And I heard the mayor's comment about financial need. And I feel that if there is a story about financial need, that would be great. But when I look at grants, I look at grants not just from a financial need perspective, but also from, from a sponsorship perspective, which is, it's not necessarily that a championship team has a financial need. Maybe they could raise money. They have money. But I think that it's also a big deal for the city to grant money to sponsor championship teams, to sponsor events so that the city could be involved. The city could maintain its relationship, build relationships with different groups. And hopefully those groups would, you know, if they have, if it's not based on financial need, if they do have money, if they do have resources, that they would give back to the community as well. And these are the kinds of relationships I'm looking at. So I'm not just looking for a financial need, but I'm looking at even sponsorship relationships. I think it's kind of funny, but appropriate or coincidental that this is council policy 49. But at the same time, I feel that, well, we can come up with our, our recommendations for how we spend city money, but I, I don't know that we would have any say on how the 49ers spend their money. But at the same time, I think that would, there'd be, we have some conversation, we have some dialogue between them. We could certainly give feedback. Thank you very much.
Vice Mayor Becker.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I'm glad that, Mayor, you brought up about the fact about other school districts. I know for specifics, in District 6 specifically, it has, I think it's four school districts. I think you named two of them, Mayor Gilmar, which was Campbell and Cupertino. There is also Fremont Union. And I think I may, is missing another one off the top of my head, but.
Campbell, Campbell High School District, Campbell, 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 Campbell High School District, Cupertino, Fremont Union High School District, and Santa Clara Unified.
Santa Clara. So that's four. So, yeah, so if you could do, you know, that little, as what the mayor was describing, because there's more school districts in the southern part of the city, I think that might be a little important as well.
Councilmember Hardy. And then motion would be great. Oh, we have public.
Very quickly, I just, the idea, because when we talk about Santa Clara youth, I was looking to see if it said and/or, because that was one of the questions I was asked, whether they went to a Santa Clara school or lived in town. Because I had to show that out of the 15 kids I took, that eight of them did live in Santa Clara. But that was, I was nervous over that, even though it is a Santa Clara City high school. And every time they mentioned the team, they mentioned in this international competition, from Santa Clara. They made a big deal about that. I do appreciate the mayor's comment about 45 days, maybe 60, just because of the reality. It is true. It's volunteers, it's parents. You usually have sometimes only a week or two to put things together. The struggle I had is I needed to give them a budget, and then we got 20% of that. But it ended up being, instead of, I had to guess. And some things were much more expensive than we knew. And there was no way to true up that afterwards and say, is it possible to get, instead of our total cost being 20,000, like I thought it was 30,000, because we had never been before and you are completely guessing and you sometimes guess slow. So I just wondered if there's a way to true that up. Thank you.
Or maybe ask for more and then you return it.
Afterward, yes.
I forgot. There's questions. I know you've been, I'm ready to make a motion. There's questions. So when you're ready with the questions.
I may lean on Laura to help with some of these questions, but I'll try my best to go through what has been asked. In response to Councilmember Hardy's initial question about whether or not we are requiring original receipts for food and other invoices, I would defer to Laura to respond to that actually, as the implementer of the program.
Thank you. I can, I can speak to what our process is. And we typically actually prefer a scanned document emailed over to us. A lot of communication between the grant recipient and applications are via email or via phone call. And also in some instances, we do have in-person, in-person visits where we go over receipts if that's needed. But we're pretty flexible on how we can receive the documentation. We, we aim to work with the applicant and work with the grant recipient and provide the best customer service we possibly can. And so we can accept these documentation in a number of ways. But scanned over email is great.
Thank you, Laura. And I hear that there is, there are multiple comments from council regarding 30 days not being enough time for youth competitions and performances. And the recommendation there is to extend that timeframe to 45 or 60 days. I think that we can be supportive of 60 days just from a timing standpoint. There are questions about, from Councilmember Jane regarding, is there a dashboard that demonstrate the remaining grant funds and how we are creating grant funds or allowing, promoting the grant program? So there is an intention to reach out to more potential applicants about the program to allow for more people to be aware of the program. We can definitely look into creating some sort of dashboard that will give more real-time information on how much grant funds are left for the public's awareness.
Christine, can we go back to the timeframe of 30 days currently? And I know that there was a number of comments on potentially extending that up to maybe 45 days or 60. I want to turn it over to the city attorney just to comment on a potential modification that will keep it at 30 days, but then provide a extension if needed. Just sometimes with receipts, the longer you wait, if you give people 60 days to turn receipts, and in fact, they have to go back, right, going back to retrieve something from a retailer, maybe harder the longer you wait. And so I do think it's best to have a, a set time period, but then allow leniency if needed.
Yes. So the provision we talked about, which we would tender for your consideration to be added to the policy, would relate both to time periods and potentially other minor discrepancies that could be addressed, because it's not always a time period, right? It might, it might be something else. So the language would be something like, "The city manager shall have discretion to provide additional time or waive minor discrepancies in the application or compliance process where circumstances reasonably warrant." So that would be, it wouldn't have to be in a, you know, we're not extending something in a specific way, but in the circumstance, Member Hardy, that you identified, you know, or additional time for another public agency might be warranted, or frankly, for any nonprofit that's scrambling to meet those requirements, some leniency would be allowed and it would be within the city manager's reasonable discretion. So that's a, that's a thought as an alternative.
Thank you, city attorney. And from Councilmember Jane, there was a comment about the city has turned down certain, not certain, but CB, CBDG grants, applicants in the past, and that this might be, the grant program might be an opportunity to help fund those applicants. And so we can definitely work with city departments to see what or who those applicants are and reach out to them about the grant program to see if they're eligible for the program.
And just want to clarify, CDBG, Community Development Block Grants from the federal government, oftentimes those requests are a lot larger than $10,000. However, and connected to the questions about money being left over, part of the recommendation is to expand the pool of potential events or fun, things that we can fund. And so know that we may have a larger pool, so we, we won't have those leftover funds.
Thank you, city manager. From Councilmember Watanabe, there was a question of whether or not we have turned down groups because they have not met the 50% requirement. Just to clarify, the council policy incorporates old language from a prior council policy for championship team funding. And so in that language, it includes language about requiring 50% Santa Clara students or 50% residents. We do interpret Santa Clara schools to include all schools located in the city of Santa Clara. So all the school districts that may not be titled Santa Clara will certainly be eligible to apply.
Right. And on that note, just a clarification. If there is a school district that, let's say resides outside of the city's boundaries, but Santa Clara students go there, a grant from there can be eligible, one if the students reside in Santa Clara, or if the program that they're applying for has more than 50% of Santa Clara residents, right? And so... And so it's both schools that are within our boundary, but then other schools can qualify if the individuals are residents or if more than 50% of them qualify.
And then Councilmember Watanabe, just to expand on the specific question was whether or not we turn down applicants for being less than 50%. That has not happened in my experience. In fact, if we recognize a discrepancy, we do our best to work with the applicant and try to make reasonable accommodations, you know, if we can.
Thanks, Laura. And in terms of allocating or reserving funds for youth competitions and performances, I think in the report we stated that I bet... I think about $18,000 has been expended in the last fiscal year towards youth competitions and performances. We've also never run out of community grant funds. And so at this moment, it's not a concern that we need to reserve any specific funds for the youth groups. In terms of... let's see, sorry. Mayor, I think I already addressed your comment or question regarding whether or not eligibility for the students has changed. It has not changed. Like I said, 50%, as long as it's 50% of Santa Clara residents or 50% students from Santa Clara located schools, they will be eligible.
Thank you.
And I think I nodded at this, but for the record, ineligible costs does include programmatic costs such as salaries, overhead costs, and things like that. There were a couple of questions regarding, how do you demonstrate financial need? And so nonprofit status or a letter explaining, you know, what is the financial need? That can also be demonstrated through a program budget as well. Councilmember Park. Sorry, just reading through my notes.
While you do that, Christine, let me address part of what Councilmember Park mentioned, which is, you said sponsorship. Just want to clarify that through our community grant program, when we provide a grant, we are technically not sponsoring the event. And we're very clear with the grant awardees that they're not to use the city's logo. It's just because we may be providing grant funds for... to support a project, but we don't sponsor that because we would need to do a different type of analysis in the concern about attaching the city's liability to an event, right? There's a difference between providing some funding so something can happen versus being a co-sponsor, which may very well attach the city's liability.
Thank you. And from Councilmember Park, I'll let Laura respond to the question that you had.
Thank you, Christine. And yes, Councilmember Park, if I understand your question correctly, you had a question regarding receipts for reimbursement. That question can be answered in a couple of different ways.
I actually think you answered it.
Oh, great, great. I think that we responded to all of council's questions. Please let us know if there's anything else.
All right. I'm going to go to the public and then we'll go back to council final comments. Is there any member of the public that would like to speak on this issue? I have a few people that are still with us online. Do we have any questions, comments? I don't see any hands, so, okay. Council. Councilmember Park.
I just want to be clear. I thank you to the city manager for the clarification on sponsorship and the other things that we'd have to do to get a city behind an event. Makes me feel like we should look at all the grants more in depth anyway, but thank you very much for that. I just want to make a clarification. I keep hearing about 50% Santa Clara students or Santa Clara residents. And, I mean, there are some schools where Santa Clara residents go there, but they're not 50% of the school population. But if they're 50% of the team that's being sponsored, that's what's required. I just want to make that clarification, that they're 50% of the people applying for the grant. Just want to make that clarification.
Correct. As long as there's 50% of the youth applying who are Santa Clara residents, even if they attend schools that are outside of Santa Clara, they would be considered eligible.
Councilmember Hardy, and do you have a motion as well?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion, but I wanted just... I mentioned the trueing up and how things had changed and that was not addressed as far as if the true costs were much higher than what was budgeted when... because you turned that in to begin with. I wanted just a clarification if there was any way to true up that or to augment the grant request.
So a lot of these requirements are outlined in the grant approval letter and as well as in the approved grant application. And so I think that staff can use language that addresses that true-up through that process.
Thank you.
I'll second your motion, Councilmember Hardy.
I'm going to make a motion to approve the new policy with the change that the city attorney has suggested, giving the city manager some leeway over deadlines.
All right. We have a motion and a second by Vice Mayor Becker. When you're ready.
Whoa.
You got a 7-0 vote. Thank you so much.
Thank you, council.
And it's seven minutes before midnight. There you go. Drive home safely. All right. Next, we have reports of members and special committees. City manager, report.
No report.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion and a second to adjourn. You are now. Please register your vote. And that passes unanimously, and this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Have a good rest of the evening.